The county board is in session. We have, we are in a work session today, the last of the fiscal year 26 for budget work sessions. The next will be already a wrap-up work session. Today, we will be talking about capital spending from the Pay As You Go Fund, short-term finance transportation capital fund, Crystal City, tax increment financing, metro and debt service. We have, I propose to break up this session in, I hope, reasonable chunks so that we can accommodate a little bit lengthier presentations per item. So we will start with the capital program budget. And Mr. Manager, this is your domain.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. What we're going to do, Karen Tally is going to lead us through this afternoon until we get to the metro piece. Before I turn it over to Karen, I did promise I wouldn't embarrass her, so I'm just going to say that she is going to be retiring after 24 years of service to the county. She will be doing that in a few weeks, and she wanted to go out on a high note, so make sure you treat her very well today. So Karen, I'm going to turn it over to you, but thank you for your service.
We apologize that we didn't bring any flowers.
I'll, I'll accept that, but I appreciate that.
But we need to make sure that when the actual retirement happens that we do. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. So again, my name is Karen Tally. I am the capital budget coordinator for the Department of Management and Finance, and I'll be presenting an overview of the capital program budget as proposed for FY '26, and then I'll be followed by each of the individual program areas. So jumping right in, the FY '26 capital program budget covers a large portfolio of infrastructure investments. Next slide, thank you. From our roads to our parks, technology and government facilities, the FY '26 capital spending totals over $253 million. These investments are made from a variety of revenue sources, and while the budget is approved in a one-year, actual implementation of any particular budget often spans multiple years. As you'll see detailed in the next slide, these dollars have several different fund sources, many of which are legally restricted to the capital program. For FY '26, close to 90% of the funding is restricted, whether due to bond funding sources, state and federal grant funding, or restricted transportation revenue. This slide breaks out the various funding sources which I referenced earlier. So capital funding has a number of sources that are dedicated and restricted to specific capital activities. Dedicated capital categories include transportation, which you can see in the bottom right portion of this graph, as well as state and federal grants on the left portion of the graph. The Crystal City TIF, Transportation Capital Fund, and our state and federal grants are all restricted in use and dedicated for transportation and/or metro activities. These three sources together represent 32% of the overall capital funding portfolio. Other capital sources include Pago funding, which is a mix of both ongoing and one-time funding. This year's Pago budget is funded at just over $23 million and is funded from net tax support, reallocated fund balance, as well as legally restricted bond premium funds. The final two funding sources are short-term finance and general obligation bonds. Short-term finance is 4% of the overall annual program budget and typically funds our core technology assets. Geo bonds in this budget represent the second year of the 2024 referenda from the adopted CIP and are proposed at almost $140 million. Next slide. As mentioned in the previous slide, Pago is proposed to be funded at $23.3 million from a variety of sources, including a mix of ongoing and one-time dollars. It funds the replacement of assets with a useful life of 10 years or less, mostly projects that are not appropriate for long-term financing. Pago has traditionally been used to fund the routine maintenance of our capital assets. It serves to reduce the failure of our infrastructure by investing with a goal of maintaining our large portfolio of assets in a state of good repair. As in the most recent previous years, Pago dollar investments have continued to be concentrated on must-have projects and end-of-life replacement cycles. In addition, we've focused funding on extending the useful life of assets while also replacing assets that have a possible risk of near-term failure. In keeping with our sound financial policies, it's important to maintain Pago as a flexible cash source. The bond rating agencies positively view having a mix of cash and financed dollars. Next slide. This slide illustrates various funding sources for Pago across the past eight years. Since COVID, we've not had the same level of ongoing Pago funding. As you can see, over the past several years, the ongoing funding has gone up and down drastically, but has started to level out over the past three years. As expected, the majority of Pago funding continues to be from one-time dollars. However, it's important to keep in mind that increased ongoing Pago dollars are required to provide programs a stable funding source. This will allow departments to develop a sustainable and predictable maintenance capital investment program. Next slide, please. General obligation bonds are long-term debt financing for capital infrastructure projects. They fund county projects such as Gateway Park, facility improvements at the Court's Police Building, capital maintenance projects such as roof replacements and park improvements, the repaving of our roads, and bridge maintenance. Every two years, as part of the CIP process, the board approves a referenda that includes two years of geo bond funding. The majority of these funds are to year two of the referenda approved in the adopted CIP last summer. The capital program implements projects across several years, and this demonstrates a good example of that with the issuance of geo bond funds across several years as the project is being executed. Bond dollars are used to finance projects with an average useful life of 10 years or more and adhere to approved financial policies. Next slide. Short-term debt financing is the financing of assets with a useful life of three to 10 years. Because of the shorter useful life of the projects, the interest rates are typically lower than rates for long-term bonds. The finance tool allows us to spread payments over a term rather than paying all at once. This, of course, helps with the affordability of all of the equipment that is purchased with this source. As with geo bonds, debt service for short-term financing is funded in the general fund in the operating budget. This source has historically been used to finance equipment for enterprise technology and public safety. Project costs are continuing to increase. Supply chain issues are a main driver along with increased demand for materials and labor shortages. The increased costs of bulk materials and large equipment are also major contributions or major contributors to capital project price increases, as well as an increased execution time for projects. And finally, the lead time necessary to receive materials for any given project is another added factor in cost growth. With the increased project costs, one of the biggest impacts is how to make, how projects can be funded. We have to make really hard choices about what projects to fund and where to focus investments. And finally, with making the hard funding choices, there's an added layer to maintain a balance between improving existing assets and funding new projects. Both are important in striving towards a state of good repair and funding new projects to meet the changing needs of the organization and community. So before the departments come forward with their presentations, I have two projects that I'd like to present. The Arlington Economic Development received a total of $250,000 across both of these programs in the proposed budget. The first program is to maintain all of the county public art, and the second program is to make facility improvements in county and schools' joint-use spaces. And that concludes my presentation. And with that, the Facilities and Energy Management Program can come forward.
I meant to say thank you. So on to Facilities and Energy Management. I want to just advance a big thank you to many of you who have responded to the flooding of our building, of our main building, last Sunday, I think. So I've seen some of you in the building, literally on a, what for the rest of us probably was a comfortable Sunday evening. So thank you very, very much for being there and responding so fast. So let's, let's get on with the presentation.
Okay, in a parade of notables, George May told me he only has 18.8 years of service with the county, and he, this will be his last presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to you, George.
Thank you, Mr. May. We know that these were very important, 18.8 years. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mark.
I am absolutely impressed that there is not a second decimal to that, but it's amazing.
Okay. Next slide, please. All right. So the Pago requests we're going to present for fiscal '26, we're going to address three top priorities: delivering our projects that meet operating requirements, and as examples, in the last year, we completed the Fire Station 8 replacement and opened the Art Maintenance Building. We're continuing to maintain our state of good repair, and we do face aged systems. The second picture is the ductwork on the roof of the Madison Community Center, which is not in a very good condition. And finally, we're continuing to advance electrification initiatives. The picture is the 394 solar panels we installed on the parking area at the Art Building, and we'll get into more detail on these as we go. Next. The map shows the distribution of our specific requested projects. There are 12 in specific and another four that address county-wide issues. Well, we're going to discuss these specific requests. Just as an aside, the Facilities Team, FNB, FDNC, and Energy have 70 projects underway in various stages: conceptual design, detailed design, and construction. The next slide addresses how we maintain equity with the public and our public-facing EV chargers. The map shows the different colors through the current calendar, I'm sorry, that's fiscal '25. We didn't have any programmed to invest in '26, and the orange ones are the two we'd be doing in fiscal '27. We do maintain an inventory of 90 facilities. This year, we added the Art Operations Maintenance Building. Our building count stays at 90 because Parks has taken over the management of the new Gunston Indoor Soccer Facility. The four leases we have are obviously the Bosman Building, Sequoia Complex, houses human relations, AED at 1100 North Glebe, and the Police Undercover Staff Office. The two vacant buildings are the Clarendon House, which is adjacent to Fire Station 4, closed in 1990, and the old Fire Station 7 in Sherrlington Village, that closed in 2019. In terms of the current state of our facilities, this is a summary of our work and our challenges in maintaining a state of good repair. We have a wide range of ages, but just in general, the average age of our facilities is now 44 years. And so what this means is a number of buildings have systems that have been replaced or have exceeded their useful life, and in some occasions are due for a second round of replacement. The pie chart shows an aggregation from the 2017 Facility Constitution Assessment, indicates that over 50% of our ongoing maintenance investments will be focused on the three areas of electrical upgrades, HVAC improvements, and maintaining piping systems. Now, our most recent experience with a piping system is in the Bosman Building, but we have had similar experiences with piping systems in the Court's Police Building. The next slide I'd like to get into is the impact of when we go converting our buildings from gas heating to electric. And the example is the boiler electrification at the 3700 Four Mile Run Building. The impact to the core electrical system is, came with a premium of $760,000 versus if we had replaced it with another gas-fired unit. The cost breakdown is really, it's incidental on the piece of equipment that's providing hot water for the building heating, but the internal electrical system was aged. We needed to replace the switchgear, and because we've increased the electrical demand, Dominion has improved their service feeds and bringing a new transformer. So Stephen Burr will get into more details in our later slides on the overall greenhouse gas impacts, the changes we get when we electrify our heating systems. And Stephen will do next on the energy management, followed by Adam on our facilities management, and Adele on our facilities design and construction. An overview, Adam?
Great. Thanks, George. On the next slide is the, is an overview of the proposed energy management projects for the FY '26 Pago budget. These projects cover a variety of energy areas, including onsite solar installations at county facilities, supporting electric vehicle conversions through the county fleet charger installations, and implementing energy performance upgrades at county buildings. The projects total $1.9 million from the Pago budget, with an additional $300,000 from the Climate Action Fund. These projects all further multiple strategies of the carbon roadmap, the implementation framework for the community energy plan. On the next slide is an overview of the current and recommended projects from, from the Climate Energy Fund. This was a slide that was also presented during the DES general fund presentation, so I'm not going to dive into too much detail, but just wanted to provide a quick reminder of the variety of projects from the CAF. On the next slide is the, is an overview of the 2023 greenhouse gas emissions for the community-wide for a total of about 1.8 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent, and then it also shows the county's 3% contribution to the community a total. If you factor in the Maplewood project, the county's virtual power purchase agreement, that drops to 2% of the community-wide impact for county operations. The bar charts show the specific county operations greenhouse gas emissions inventory, with the first bar showing without the Maplewood VPNA, and the second bar showing with the, with the VPNA renewable energy included. The energy performance upgrade projects will impact the purple section in the middle of the bar, which will be about 26% of county operations, GHG inventory, or 11% of greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas emissions for county operations when we include Maplewood. It's also important to note that the county is anticipating electricity load growth as buildings and transportation electrify. In addition to the greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals, these Pago projects also further other energy-related goals, including energy use intensity to reduce how much energy the county facility uses, and also reducing the amount of renewable electricity that the county needs to purchase to power county operations. The county identifies and implements energy performance upgrades in county facilities through multiple different project streams. There's two general types of energy performance upgrades the county implements, with one that's focused on the short-term financial paybacks, and others that are focused on longer-term, deeper decarbonization opportunities. The short payback period projects include measures like lighting retrofits that have a payback period of about five years or less. These also include retrocommissioning efforts that have lower capital costs, but also more modest energy and GHG savings. Those measures also will contribute to energy savings on the bill and greenhouse gas emissions. The deeper decarbonization measures requires more substantial capital investment and include measures such as electrification of end-of-life HVAC, water heating equipment, and bundle measures for, for building envelope upgrades. Those measures have higher incremental costs and may also impact and increase operating cost. The $707,000 Pago request furthers both types of these measures, and the continued retrofits of lighting at the Justice Center, retrocommissioning projects that uses a data-driven approach to implement high financial payback projects at county facilities, and continued analysis for the deeper decarbonization and electrification opportunities for end-of-life equipment. This slide dives further into the two examples of energy performance projects and shows a few energy, cost, and greenhouse gas metrics, and how different benefits may occur from these different types of projects. On the left is the deeper decarbonization boiler electrification at 3700 Four Mile, South Four Mile Run, and on the right is the lighting retrofit at the Justice Center. The boiler electrification project that George mentioned has a $760,000 incremental cost, or the capital cost over a like-for-like replacement, but it also has the higher forecasted greenhouse gas savings over its 30-year useful life. The lighting retrofit project is about $200,000 and has a payback period of five years from extended bulb life, reduced maintenance, and energy savings on the monthly utility bills. The greenhouse gas savings are smaller, about a quarter of what the boiler electrification project is. When comparing the incremental costs of the projects, the boiler electrification has a relatively lower cost of GHG savings per dollar invested than the lighting retrofits, but the boiler electrification project will also have a cost premium on the monthly bills. The lighting retrofit will have a monthly bill reduction. The boiler project is also, is also to note that that's for equipment at the end of useful life, which makes the dollar invested per greenhouse gas emissions saved more efficient. The greenhouse gas savings are also presented as a range to show the dynamic nature of what the Dominion grid will look like in the future and the associated carbon intensities. These two projects are meant to be illustrative of the type of project planning and analysis for energy performance, and demonstrate how the metrics between energy, greenhouse gas savings, capital, and operating costs may not always align, particularly when you're comparing between different measure opportunities, as well as between different types of measures. On the next slide is, shows the decarbonization and electrification efforts at county buildings. At the top are some guiding principles for HVAC and equipment electrification that includes evaluating different types and technologies of systems, focusing on end-of-life equipment, minimizing disruptions to facilities, and planning for evaluation, measurement, and verification of the installed systems, so we can track how those systems are performing after they're installed, and help inform the analysis work that I described on the, on the previous slide. The first column is the location of the facilities with ongoing or planned upgrades with, with the project phase in the middle Gantt chart of the slide. Specific information about the equipment is in the last column, and one important thing to note on this slide is just the variety of technologies that we're implementing and piloting, including electric resistance boilers, variable refrigerant flows or VRFs, and electric rooftop units. My colleague, Adam Clawwee, will discuss a couple of these projects in more detail in, in future slides. Switching gears a bit on this slide from energy efficiency to renewable energy, this slide shows the onsite solar arrays that are, that are currently installed and planned for the next few years. The project will use a blended approach of county-owned and maintained systems, as well as power purchase agreements or PPAs. A pre-screening process was completed that evaluated opportunities based on the size of roof or PPA viability, roof conditions, and other feasibility, and other feasibility considerations. Quincy 1, Quincy 3, Central Library and Equipment Bureau are planned for PPA, while the Residential Program Center, Sherrlington Library, and Fire Station 3 are planned for county-owned and maintained. As a county continues to grow its onsite solar portfolio, these projects will, will hit over 1 megawatt of installed solar capacity through these installations. The DES team works collaborative to ensure that electrified fleet vehicles have the appropriate charging infrastructure. Currently, the county has 80 internal chargers at key locations across 14 locations to ensure that charging access can be provided for the fleet, particularly focusing on redundancy to support departmental mass emissions. The charging infrastructure dispenses 160,000 kilowatt-hours in 2024, or about the electricity use at Fire Station 2 in 2024. And that all, and that all supported 420,000 electric miles that were driven by the fleet in, in 2024. In FY '26, the $250,000 project will support expanding fleet charging at the Justice Center, which currently has the highest, has the highest utilization rate for Level 2 chargers for, in our fleet charging network, and also additional public safety vehicles are planned for electrification at that site. I will now turn it over to my colleague, Adam Clawwee, to cover the facilities management slides.
Thank you, Stephen. So the following is a summary of the facilities management and critical system infrastructure programs proposed for FY '26, utilizing multiple funding sources in order to maintain a general state of good repair using the guiding principles of addressing critical infrastructure, needs to bolster resiliency and continuity of operations at critical sites, specifically ones that support public safety operations. Continue to advance our county energy initiatives through increasing energy efficiency and implementing projects to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, as Stephen mentioned, and our focus continues to emphasize preventive maintenance to extend the useful life of existing systems as much as possible, while using informative data from our corrective maintenance systems and our facility condition assessments to inform and prioritize our investment decisions. Next slide, please. Following those principles, I just want to highlight some of the projects we completed this year. In support of our energy goals, we expanded the county's EV charging network, including bringing EV chargers online at the Courthouse Plaza parking lot. We've helped reduce energy consumption through roof replacements at Court Square West and Equipment Bureau, and window replacements at Cultural Affairs, providing a better envelope for the buildings. We've addressed urgent infrastructure needs, the replacement of the chiller at Walter Reed, supporting DPR and DHS programs, and performed critical structural repairs, actually, in the Central Library garage, so just a few feet below us. We also took proactive steps to replace the six automatic transfer switches, or ATSs, in the Court's Police Building, helping ensure critical functions can pounce back from a power disruption. Next slide. Across multiple, multiple funding sources, we are managing a rather significant portfolio of active projects, as George mentioned. Some of the projects underway include the Courthouse Plaza Network Operations Center, a Chipmunk relocation about to begin construction, as well as a public safety, public safety radio site generator installation nearing completion. We recently awarded construction contracts to renovate the restrooms, HVAC systems, and roof, again, here at Central Library, replacing the original switchboard at Court Square West, and we are further progressing the boiler electrification at Cultural Affairs, the 3700 South Four Mile Run site. We're also advancing design to modernize the elevators in the Court's Police Building, as well as HVAC replacement and additional facility improvements at the Madison Community Center, one I'll mention a little more later, or actually now. So focusing now on FY '26, we have, some of our requests are for additional funding for existing projects, and others are new to support additional community services. Highlighting some of those requests, one of the funding is for the detention facility HVAC project and Court's Police Elevator Modernization are both in design and seeking additional funding to support increases in scope to account for the necessary phasing of these projects to minimize disruption. of these projects to minimize disruption, as well as increases to meet additional code requirements that we've encountered during the design phase. We are requesting $1 million in PEGO from Madison Community Center to support some of the facility improvements that will be performed in alignment with a baseline maintenance project of the windows, roof, and HVAC. There's also a request in the CAF funding for $1 million to total 1.215 in support of all those electrical upgrades needed to complete the project. Once complete, the project is expected to reduce the energy use intensity, the EUY, by about 55%, so a significant drop, comparing, using those metrics compared to, as Stephen mentioned earlier. And incremental cost to greenhouse gas reduction is approximately $543 per ton, so a much lower rate per ton because of the larger investment we're making. We're also requesting funds to support community services at Cherrydale Library by replacing the heat pumps, as well as the HVAC units that serve the gallery units at the Museum of Contemporary Art, or MOKA. At both facilities, the equipment has reached the end of their useful lives, require more frequent corrective repairs, and unfortunately, if we don't do some of these repairs soon, we may not be able to fully utilize those spaces. Next slide. Shifting to the critical systems infrastructure, we are looking to, seeking funding to proactively address some of those critical systems, including emergency generator replacement at critical sites to support resiliency, again for community services, including Fire Station IV is the first one we've identified. We are prioritizing the safety of our people and our assets through the replacement of obsolete fire alarm systems, starting with the Quincy III site, supporting transit operations, transportation operations, and then ultimately, and finally, we are supporting the continuity of those public safety radio sites by replacing the uninterruptible power supply, or UPS systems, which have also reached the end of their useful lives, starting at the Lee Pumping Station radio site. That's just a brief summary of the facilities management and critical systems programs, and I'll turn it over to Adele.
Thank you, Adam. Okay. A request for funding for fiscal year 26 is focused on maintaining a state of good repairs for existing facilities as well as planning studies which allow the county to make some strategic decisions. Before I go into the detail of our proposed budget, I'd like to highlight some of the projects we completed this past year. Next slide. Last summer, we installed netting around the Boston Garage as a stopgap measure to address the failing facade. This was the first step in addressing the facade that Greg spoke about in his presentation to the board. Also during the summer, our Real Estate Bureau completed the land acquisition for the future Fire Station VII. In the fall, we completed the first phase of the newly constructed art operations and maintenance facility that George mentioned, and the demolition and turnover of the 3108 Columbia Pike Site to APS. Phase 2 of the Fire Station will be completed shortly, and a ribbon cutting is tentatively scheduled at the end of April. Next slide. We have several projects underway, and these are some of the highlights. The air handler at the 202014 Street Building is underway and should be completed this spring. Over the summer, we're expecting to finish the first phase of the Oakland Street Warehouse renovation, which will facilitate the Signature Theater expansion, and the renovation of the Commonwealth Attorney Suite to address their immediate staffing needs should be completed this summer as well. We will complete the Lee Community Center study by the fall of this year, and then the Cultural Affairs renovation will also be completed this fall, which will allow the pottery program to be relocated from the Lee Community Center. I'll talk about the Bosman Hoteling Project, which is a precursor for the SAIU project, in detail on the next slide, and then, sorry, still the old slide, if you go back. Phase 2 of the AMF Project, which includes the charging infrastructure, is expected to reach completion later this fall. And finally, the final project for our team this year will be the Court's Police Fourth Floor renovation, which should complete in the winter of this year. The next slide. So last year, we received funding to replace the county's 30-plus-year-old systems furniture, which is beyond its 15- to 20-year life. With the systems furniture replacement project and the hybrid work environment, we're using this as an opportunity to more efficiently utilize the county's space. As part of this project, we will be providing more collaboration spaces by providing more huddle rooms, as shown in this picture. The first phase of this implementation of hoteling project in the Bosman Government Center ahead of the DIPSM SAIU consolidation in Bosman Government Center. This consolidation and future implementations of hoteling will allow us to reduce our footprint and facilitate the vacation of the Court Square West Building. Next slide. And this brings us back to our PEGO request for fiscal year 26. Our request is focused on maintaining a state of good repairs and planning studies that will allow us to make some strategic decisions. The facilities condition assessment that Adam mentioned is also included in this, and the Carlin Springs Site planning studies included in this request. The facilities finishes and furnishings line item includes maintaining county facilities, including some state of good repairs, such as painting and replacing carpet in the aging facilities. That concludes the FDNC portion of the presentation, and I'll turn it back over to George.
Okay. And our wrap-up, thanks to Stephen, Adam, and Adele. As we go forward, we're building on these considerations that pictures at the top indicate. Our ability to deliver is constrained by the premiums we described in electrifying heating systems and extended lead times for long, for equipment, especially electrical switchgear and transformers. We're also requesting funding to maintain our safe operations, which both Adam and Adele have described, but as we go forward, we still have a challenge in staffing our projects and all of that. Our pay scales for the technicians, mechanics, project managers, and even senior leadership don't match the market. We have seen an upswing in applications from what's happening across the river, but I'm not sure how much that's really going to solve for us. But we will continue with judicious investments in conversion from fossil to electric in our heating systems and our vehicles, again constrained by our funding. That is the summary of our facilities presentation. We're open to any questions.
Thank you. I think it's reasonable to make a pause here. Every year, these presentations are so full with information, I think that we could spend hours discussing these, but I hope that we can focus on the essentials. Vice Chair DeFranti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only one question. It's Slide 6. I'm not sure that this will surprise once we see the topics on this slide. It may not surprise the manager, DMF, or Ms. Tally. I do want to just say a big thank you to Mr. May and Ms. Tally and for your extraordinary service, and I don't know who this question is to, but $6 million in ongoing, of course we should continue to invest ongoing, but we have a lot of one-time funding that we're also investing in PEGO. Can someone say a little bit about what determines the balance of ongoing versus one-time, keeping in mind we don't have any ongoing right now? And so, looking for, it's Slide 6, I think it's Slide 6 of the first section.
That's the PEGO funding over time.
PEGO, I may have said the wrong, yeah.
You're in Slide 6, sure.
Yeah.
Slide 6 from the first presentation.
I'm sorry to miss the first cut, but this is the only question I have at all in this, in these big sections. It's sort of, what determines how much ongoing and?
I'll take, yeah, I'll take, come on up, Michelle. I'll take, I do want to state something, and I'm going to let Michelle add a few things here, which is that, I just so you understand, the PEGO and short-term financing budget that I have proposed underachieves what was adopted by the Board and the CIP. I don't have the exact amount. So when you ask what determines the balance, we try very hard to, we know we have needs that are at least $20 million without blinking every year, so that should all be ongoing, but we've never been able to get to that level, so we have one-time funding as it becomes available, especially from bond premium and other one-time funds that we put together, and it is a balance. So I'm not going to say this is the right number. I know the number's too low, but it also could be too high if we have needs that are more important elsewhere. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, Richard or Michelle?
No, the only other point I would make is we aren't keeping pace with construction inflation, just from an ongoing and even one-time investment, and I think that's more of a risk now, even as evidenced in recent bids that have come in. So it's just, and then I think I would just reflect back on what George said, the average age of our facilities is 44 years old, and since I've passed that mark in my personal age, I know how much investment is required, but no, seriously, it requires a lot, so.
So that makes sense, and one-time funding and there's a multiplier benefit to construction and 44 years is an older stage. Looking back to fiscal year 2021, so in the middle of COVID, you know, we had like six different budgets, I feel like, over the course of the year, and we just shut things down, and I don't know that this economic moment is quite that economic moment, so I'm heartened to see that we're fiscal year 2021, we're bigger in fiscal year 2026, but I really appreciate you're saying, Mr. Manager, that we are, anything that is discretionary, so I'm just sort of wondering, did we think that as we did?
We did, we did, and I think I've said previously, I mean at another work session, if, when we come back in, I've said I'm going to come back to the Board in June, right as of today, we have lost $2,000 in federal funding, okay? If we were to lose $88 million in federal funding, I think I'd be happy that our numbers were where they were during COVID in this particular section. I mean, this is one of the places you go, and I say that, I mean, I'm looking at it, not looking to my right or my left, because we've had long conversations about, these are all the things we want to invest in, and I'm sure Adam, or Adele, or Stephen, or George would take you on a tour and show you buildings that we have that are pretty crappy. I mean, that's a budget term, but we, you know, we'll use more duct tape, but that is not the best way to approach it, so I don't feel like we're yet at the position where we should pull back on that, but we could be a few months from now, so if that's what you're getting at. I mean, that, this doesn't keep me up at night, but it comes close.
Thank you, fully agree. If I were to want to go to 2021, I would want to know first what is and is not in the continuing resolution on the federal level, because I actually think that what is in it does not lead to highest risk on the 66 million that's left, but I haven't read it and haven't gotten a summary, so that's.
Yeah, and I think, I think your point, there was a separate slide that we had during the DES presentation that talked about where we're getting funds that go towards capital projects that aren't even included in that 88 million. We talked about that yesterday, was it, I have no idea what day it is, when we were talking about the Crystal City East Entrance, that we had the money in hand, so we don't have to worry about that, but we do have transportation projects where they're done on a reimbursable basis that we could be at risk. So I just want to heartily agree with you that things are incredibly uncertain, there's nothing absolutely correct about this number, it could end up going lower, and life would go on, but this is all a balance, so.
So, thank you, Vice Chair DeFranti. Miss Coffey?
Yeah, our finance team can stick around for a minute. It may be too early to answer this amongst many of our finance and economic questions right now, but are we seeing any impact on the bond markets in terms of being able to get the financing that we anticipated from the bonds that we authorized in the referendum?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, there's the one-time side of this, but then there's also.
And just to elaborate, what Jason meant when he said was not yet is that there's an upcoming issue about whether the federal government's going to default on its debt and the debt ceiling going up, and that is recently, I think as of yesterday, Metro got a notification because DC is still hanging out there that their bonds are on negative watch. Now that might go away when the House acts, so yeah, not yet, which means things, the uncertainty grows, but we'll see what happens.
I mean, for us, we haven't tested the bond market as of very recently, right?
No, and Jason's going to make a presentation later, I mean, I will, without, because I know you're so excited to hear about it, we're going to see what we can do to try to avoid going into the bond market until things settle down, so we'll be back to you in 2035.
Hopefully. And to Vice Chair DeFranti, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful. You know, I feel like I keep being the really depressing voice in some of these meetings, but I wasn't here during COVID. Can we talk a little bit about the process? You know, we will adopt our budget in April, seemingly sooner than we know some of our worst-case outcomes. What is the process during the fiscal year, I guess, of potentially deferring on some of these projects or pushing them out?
So I'll speak to the, sort of, the technical budget side, and then I'm going to ask any of the luminaries next to me to weigh in on how this actually affects project implementation. We have, the fiscal year begins July 1st. Several of these projects are not yet underway, and we haven't committed any money to them, so turning it off in June is fine, we haven't committed the funds, but there are some projects that are ongoing, and anyone should feel free to speak to what the impacts could be if we had to, you know, we have commitments and contracts and things like that, so.
Or also, you know, like how we go about assessing and determining which projects as well, because I assume we wouldn't just shut down 100%.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, we have a preference for things that affect life and safety first. We have some criteria that we focus on those kinds of programs, and I will give you one example. If there, if in the, we did cover capital investments in parks and DTS earlier on, but if there were a playground that were coming up, that, that's not included here, but I'm using that as an example, we would hit the pause button on that because we feel like there are other playgrounds and we could get away with that. If there's something like a boiler or a burst pipe, you know, we would, but I mean, it seems sort of obvious, but that's.
Or garages with structural.
Yeah, that's the way, that's the way we go through and reprioritize, but you know, Adam can tell you, we have hundreds of projects and buildings and facilities that are just all lined up, and we would sort of draw a line and figure out what it is we can sustain with our eyes open, hoping that nothing bad happens, so.
I mean, I don't have actually too much more to add to that, it's pretty spot-on. I mean, yeah, we'll see what is most critical, which one's the greatest disruption to operations, and then just, you know, come back and figure out what we can do.
If I could add just a couple of other thoughts, too. Almost all of our buildings are fully operational, meaning whether it's 24/7, like the detention facility, whether it's, or it's a library or a community center, and I think, so many projects then are phased, right? So Adam and Adele and this team, they are in the middle of the Court's Police Comprehensive Refresh, right? So our ability, you know, we're, finally, we're on fourth floor, JDR, we're working it, we're doing third floor, you know, all those things are happening, to stop in the middle would really be disruptive to operations, and so it's kind of hard to stop those. Some of the projects, too, that you've seen that are proposed here, these buildings are so old, they're at risk of closure, like Madison. If that HVAC fails or that roof fails, that building is closed, and so we have, that is like the conversation that I think we went through really intensely here about what we're prioritizing because of the direct service. We just don't, and we don't have swing space, you know, we don't, we do not have swing space, just like schools, so it's sort of, it's a real, it's a real art, it's not just science for these guys when they put these proposals together, is how, when I, when we, Mark and I go through it all.
No, that's really helpful, and I think, you know, as much as I would love for this to be exactly what happens in fiscal year 26, it's also helpful to understand that there is time, even if we adopt as is, to come back and reassess and be dynamic in our response, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Just a personal comment, I've seen the ongoing fund support for PEGO always as a function of what else is available, right? What has changed, though, is how much is ongoing, which has been wildly oscillating, and what is, what is, what trends now to be less is bond premium. So that gives me some pause about how to really have a criteria to balance that, and that brings us back to the conversation that Mr. DeFranti, Ms. Coffey have started, is to have kind of a list of Class A, Class B, or Class C in terms of what is more important. Have it just in mind, because we will have to make some prioritization as we go, and it has to be somehow rational. On to Ms. Cunningham, and then to Mr. Spain.
Quick, easy clarification, I think, on that.
Quick, easy clarification, I think, on that same page. Page five and page six, I'm having a hard time tying the numbers out. Is the 18.3 in one-time funds, is one of these right and one wrong? Or am I just not able to tie 18.3 there? And then the next slide looks like it's 13.1. Yeah, that's, those are.
18.3, I think it may include the bond funding.
Gotcha.
So the 18.3 also includes the bond funds. We broke it out on the chart.
Okay.
So that's the difference. I believe that's what it is.
All right, maybe that's a follow-up question, just to clarify how those fit together. I'm not reading it quite right. Onto the facility stuff. First of all, thank you guys so much. It's not easy what you do. We beat on these buildings, especially this one. This one gets a lot of use, and I know you've been in here a lot and talk about swing space. We're here a lot, too. I had a couple of questions. One is, I see we still are carrying some things on the Climate Action Fund that feel a little more like maintenance than climate action. That's like Madison, Oakland Street, and LED lighting. I know those were placeholders a year ago. Can someone explain why we still have them there, whether they're really truly transformative or they're normal business?
So I think the one for Madison, that one, I would say, is more transformative because we are taking a very mixed facility in terms of its gas boiler and its mixed cooling side. And we're trying to combine it into one single unitary system. So we, and as I mentioned before, we're also projecting a significant energy use intensity reduction. So that was a rationale behind using that funding for Madison because we will see a significant climate impact by making those investments in Madison. And then anything for lighting, as Stephen mentioned, those are, again, those quick, short payback period, but still worthwhile in terms of improving the overall facility, again, better lighting, and seeing a reduction in energy consumption as well.
And I guess it's money where it's going to come out of somewhere in any case. But I think I would like to reiterate the Climate Action Fund. I would like it to be really inspiring, new actions that we wouldn't do otherwise. And I think while there may have been a time where we wouldn't have done a lighting upgrade, I think now we will and we, you know, we know that it pays back and that it's the right thing to do. So anything we can do behind the scenes to carve a little bit of that back so that we have the intended action of inspiring the community towards climate mitigation as well would make me feel a little better. So tagging that. Signature Theater expansion was mentioned. That's not something we're paying for, or what's the, where does that fit? It's probably a CIP question, but I don't remember that one.
Yes, so this is in the old garage area that they have been using for staging warehouse storage. That's their back office space, just like the county government. There's no back office space or warehouse space here in the county. And so we, they are privately fundraising to do the full-blown renovation of the Signature Theater garage. We have a warehouse, one of our worst-in-shape warehouses right next door that's used for police. We are improving that because there was some outdoor storage behind the old garage that was used by police that now we are moving into that county warehouse to help facilitate what Signature is doing, but then also dramatically improve what police has down there. It was really in horrible shape. So that's, that's what the rationale for that is.
All right, great. And then the last one was, you mentioned that hiring is a challenge or has been a challenge with the pay scales for many of our positions may be falling below market. When's the last time we did a salary, what do you call it, the family salary study? Do you know? Okay. So maybe that's a follow-up question. I thought we do it every three years, but it sounds like it's maybe wrong.
We have a four-year cycle in theory. Sometimes it gets stretched out longer. We'll have to get back to you on the answer for that.
Okay, great. Right. And they don't just say, we don't like, you know, Arlington County. It's the dollars. Yeah, okay. So let's look at that and maybe, you know, things move at different rates and different industries. And there is a lot of generational turnover happening in the industries as well. So making sure that we are scooping up the new folks and raising them up is important.
Well, we do have an uptake in the last few months from folks who used to work for the federal government that are applying.
Yeah.
And that's, generally speaking, a more qualified group of applicants.
Great.
Where we stand on money, I'm not so sure.
Okay, we'll take it as a follow-up, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spain.
Well, first, thank you for taking time out of your busy day to be here. And also, congratulations on time well spent, George, here at Arlington. So as we would say in a military farewell and following seas, thank you for your service. I do have a question or two. And how strange it is that we find ourselves in this moment. And I have a question about the current state of county facilities. If we look at Slide 5, I think this is on your presentation. I just, yeah, this is the asset inventory facilities? Just a general question for me. So we have four leased office spaces. Have there been given, has there been any thought or given to perhaps outside of those leased spaces, is there a cost savings if we were to acquire a type of business and have it our own, a building? Have you ever thought, are there opportunities like that? God, I know we're paying a good penny, right? I'm not talking about Bozeman, but have we, any thoughts to that, those leased spaces?
No, we focused on renewing our leases on the best terms. Because I think the unspoken recognition is we don't have the capital to go out and buy new stuff.
Great.
I actually wanted to give you one example, and I think that, I'm going to get the dates wrong. Sequoia facility.
Yeah.
When we moved in there, and I think this point we moved in probably 15 years ago, probably. When we did that, we got an option to purchase the facility built into the deal. And that option, I think, was exercisable two years ago. Yeah, it lapsed last summer. And I think that the price, the cost of the time, whatever it was that we were doing, it was simply unaffordable for us to include it in our CIP. So we tried to give ourselves the options, but, and this is no disrespect meant to our friends at Arlington Public Schools, which is that we negotiated that option at a time where we had not yet seen the building of a whole bunch of new schools. So it seemed, it wasn't a fool's errand to negotiate it at the time. But by the time it came to exercise it, the money was spoken for.
Great. And so my last question, we can move to Slide 6. This is kind of along the same lines. So I'm hearing a lot of conversations about the state of our, you know, buildings, the average age, around 40-some-odd years. So I'm wondering, as it relates to, as we look at future projects down the road, do you have a, some type of RAG assessment of all of our buildings, facilities assessment? So, you know, red, amber, green, we can know the state of each of these buildings as we plan down the road for the 90 facilities that we have here in Arlington?
Well, not immediately, but we do have funding set aside to renew the facility condition assessment that I mentioned, because the last was in, I believe, 2016.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will address that.
Yeah, I would like to see, I think it'd be great for us to have an innate understanding of the 90 facilities, where they are from a facilities, health-wise, what do we see in the next 5, 10 years, each one of these facilities? If there's going to be work to be, need to be done? Because as we stay here, they're old, right? So we plan for this in the time of peace. And lastly, I would just say, any thoughts about, I don't see on here, I've heard a lot of conversations about the Trade Center, which we, which is our space. The facilities down there, structures. Any thoughts on what we need to do? Because I heard there's some structural issues, there's some rat rodent infestation. You're shaking your head, so I guess you heard that.
Yes, we're aware of that, yes.
You're aware of that, right. So your thoughts, what are we looking to do in the next year there, from a facilities perspective?
Well, yes, we're looking at the different options. And one of them includes what are the fixes for that particular area by water source streets? Whether it's more economic to plan two- or three-year programs or remediate it, or make the near-term expenditure to put in better trailers, if you will, to address that. And I think Greg and the facilities team, well beyond my departure, are going to try and come up with a solution. Because we recognize it's not a good situation for the staff, no question about it.
And it kind of spill over, we don't remediate and do things in advance. It can spill over into the community, the neighbors, if we don't get a good handle on all that, right?
Well, yes. And we have an ongoing issue overall with congestion at the Trade Center. And we are speaking to Mark's office again tomorrow about what are some of our options to address that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Spain.
Greg, you're good.
Yep.
You came to the table, I guess you didn't want to jump.
Only thing I would add is that, you know, we started costing out the trailers, and we'll get to those if that's appropriate. We just started working on some of that with the schools this morning, based on their experience that they had with trailers. We get some good estimates.
Yeah, thank you. I know the county manager and the team is well aware of what's going on, you know. You know, no one wants our employees not saying we're doing that, you know, having to work around conditions where there's rodents. And I'm sure we're getting in front of that. And so it is my duty just to bring that up and see where we are at this moment. And I'm sure next year we'll be in a better place. Thank you.
Is that, okay. Thank you, Mr. Spain, Ms. Coffey.
Yeah, I just would add, as part of CIP last year, one of the follow-up items I requested from facilities was the facilities condition assessment for everything. And so we have that available to us and we can recirculate, but we had it, yeah.
Thank you for that information. I had no idea, but I would love to see it.
Yes, this is indeed available. It is also the environmental performance of building, which can give us an idea of where, for example, in this context, the climate, our climate fund could be used, which I, to add to Ms. Cunningham's remarks, which I always understood as the fund that would pay the delta between the conventional execution and actually excellent. And in the case of LED lighting, for example, I doubt that you can go out and buy a non-LED light anymore, probably. I mean, you have to be really, so this is why I would agree with Ms. Cunningham that this is just conventional maintenance. Maybe, maybe I'm not right about this, but it looks like this. And this was not really the intention. The intention here is to excel, to do something that otherwise would not be possible, without the fund would not be possible. I have a very last question to not torture our time here. We are in time. The Bozeman consolidation project turned out as interesting to me. So there is a hoteling project, which means that it comes also with a decision about, you know, how the in-house and, you know, online work will be divided over time. And I guess that this, that this means something. It's a pilot, and I guess that the manager is looking forward to savings on the longer term on this side. How should we understand that?
Well, we've talked a little bit about this last year, but you should understand right now that for the organization, there was reference made to this. Every time I hold a town hall once a month with employees, I get the question, when are you telling us to return to office? And I say, you can't ask that anymore. Because we've reached a stage right now where we, we have sort of an equilibrium and we do a census of how busy each of the floors are. And we know that, and other people on the table here know better than I do, many of our floors are only utilized at 30% of their capacity. So the move that Adam was talking about, which is where we're going to be taking our, Will Flagler's group and DIPSM out of Court Square West and bringing them over to the sixth floor, where now we have our technology services staff, and then having them go to the other floors. We're going to start bringing more functions into our building with the goal of eventually removing Court Square West from the face of the earth, which is one of my goals, hopefully in the next four or five years. But we have to get through the cultural change, which I think will be, you know, people who have offices now won't have offices, getting the hoteling, that's really what's going on. We're more likely to see Court Square West come down in the next, in that timeframe before we're able to renegotiate our lease with our landlord and be able to walk away from some of the floors that we have. So that's just the time, that's the timing on it.
Correct. I'm just saying that because I believe that in the context of monitoring that, there are significant efficiencies and savings there. And at some point, we should tell the public what the actual goal is. Because this has an important, plays an important role in the decisions here. So with that, I think, colleagues, we are, we'll conclude that. Thank you, Mr. May, again, everybody for presenting today. And we are moving on to our Public Safety Capital presentation. Thank you. I have the impression that people are more satisfied with these microphones than our standard model.
They're lovely. I know, Mason is right now on Amazon shopping for microphones. Okay, so next up, Jeff Bergen is going to make the presentation. Jeff was here last week, so you'll have to remember what he looks like. But, oh, he's on the screen there. He still has the same beard and the same headset. But he's going to walk through the Public Safety presentation. And as needed, we have our Public Safety staff here that will be called up to answer specific questions. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good afternoon, Chair Karen Tonas and esteemed members of the County Board. Thank you for the opportunity for us to present our fiscal year 2026 capital budget for public safety. My name is Jeffrey Bergen. I'm the financial officer at DIPSM. So the agency that Mr. Manager just spoke about coming down from Court Square West. But I'm joined today by the leadership teams from our department and subject matter experts across public safety who can answer any of the project-specific questions that you may have today. Next slide. What's really interesting about Public Safety Capital, and I'm really glad that we got to go after facilities, design and construction, who gave a wonderful presentation, is that Public Safety Capital are really the projects that we manage within public safety. You did hear a lot of projects that were discussed where we're the customers, such as the various buildings, police stations, fire stations, emergency operations center. What we're going to be talking about in our presentation today are the ones we manage within public safety. Our mission-critical systems, our core systems for our first responders in the field. And this group really began as a public safety information technology capital and has evolved over the years. But it has an interesting background in that it began in FY 2011 out of the balances of the then-new ECC number-one call center. And there were a lot of competing needs across public safety for updating our mission-critical systems, technology that was too expensive to do in the operating budget, and making sure that we were providing some of that technology to our folks in the field. The idea was to have the agencies come together as a group, create almost like a governance board structure, and really put together our heads and come up with different strategies and objectives that we could do across public safety to best maximize these funds. From that, we created Public Safety Information Technology, or you may have heard PSIT, which is run by Grace Reyes and her team, fantastic job. And they work with the governance board structure of the chiefs of the public safety agencies and really help set those strategies and put them into play. And it's now going on, you know, 10, 15 years later, that we've started from the small balance of maybe $10 million to a 10-year CIP of over $100 million with 30 projects that meet the mission-critical needs of public safety. And what we're always, again, talking about are how we can best support the folks in the field. And I think that's what we really want to get across here today. Next slide. So when we talk about Public Safety Capital, I think one of the biggest things about the assets that we talk about, our asset inventory, is that they have a five-to-10-year useful life. And we've worked with Public Safety IT and Department of Management Finance over the years to really fine-tune this, to make sure that what we are replacing isn't just because we've reached a certain year. We want to make sure that the systems and the tools that we are replacing really get at the core of what is needed and that it supports interoperability in the field, that it supports, again, the best research and recommendations for lifecycle upgrades, and that it gives our first responders deployable assets in the field that they can utilize. We talked about life and safety when we're making decisions, especially looking at, you know, funding. And that's really our number-one priority. you know, funding, and that's really our number-one priority. So when we're looking at these things, we have about four different areas that we're looking at, public safety communications, public safety IT applications and hardware, response equipment, and vehicles and vehicle technology. As a group, these are really the buckets that we look at for all of our project needs, and they could range from something like a single system, like a 911 phone system, to widgets in the field, like we call mobile data terminals that go into our police vehicles that our police, uh, fire and sheriff's officers utilize, to our radios, handheld and portable that are in the field, to backend technology, so it really does run the gamut for public safety, and, and we've always found that when we try to talk about the refreshment of these systems and these core systems, it can get a little detached from reality, so we really want to make sure that we're driving home that point of these are things that are tangible for folks in the field. Next slide. And even more important than that is, we work really well internally across our agencies, but we also work well within the region, whether it be with other groups, other jurisdictions, one of our big collaborations is with the Council of Government when we're focusing on procurement, we want to make sure that we have regional procurement options for these items, again, we're, we're refreshing these systems pretty regularly, so we want to make sure that we have the increased purchasing power and negotiated rates for these, for these items. But almost more importantly is the interoperability and standardization, we know that emergencies do not stop at jurisdictional borders, so we want to make sure we're working with regional partners, other jurisdictions, that we're using similar tools and technology so that we can communicate. One of the great success stories there is with City of Alexandria, who we worked with for our 911 phone system, we did that, I believe, back in 2017, when we were updating what was then called Next Generation 911, updating our call-taking system, and really creating a, a design where, almost like a joint, a joint, uh, project with, with both jurisdictions, that was not only great for interoperability and standardization, but it opened the door to other grant funds as well, where the state provided funding as a proof of concept for two jurisdictions coming together to solve a common problem, and you'll hear that again through some of the other projects, it was a great success and something we look to model whenever we can. Next slide. So from going down in the weeds to kind of zooming out to a 30,000-foot view, we wanted to be able to share what a day in the life of public safety looks like in terms of the assets that we're talking about replacing. Again, that can get a little, um, you know, get a little complicated when we're talking about systems and back, backroom technology, but really what we're trying to do is provide tools to those in the field. So in this example you see here, we tried to pick something that wasn't a once-in-a-blue-moon thing, fires happen, and in this example, there are no less than 10 to 12 capital projects that are on display to help an everyday incident. So whether it's staffed in the ECC, taking a call on the 911 phone system, entering information to the computer-aided dispatch system, sending information to the fields or radios or mobile data computers, having the fleet from fire, police, and sheriff showing up, having the fire, uh, department examining the, the building, looking at detection devices, their thermal imaging cameras, knowing that our radios work because we've done the in-building wireless work, all before they put on their breathing apparatus, sheriff doing the, the fingerprinting of the folks who work in the field, these are all things that are in our capital, uh, portfolio, and all projects that we've worked on over the years, and they really are mission-critical and really provide our first responders with the tools they need on a daily basis. So to us, this was really a demonstration of the life safety that we're talking about. And just again, a thank you to, to DMF, because we've had this conversation multiple times with, with them, and they 100% get what we're, what we're trying to do, and the ability to use Pago and short-term finances, which was discussed earlier, to kind of meet those needs has been, has been huge, so it's been a great partnership. Next slide. And again, to that point, we start kind of moving into the, the funding of what we're looking at this year, uh, the projects that we'll talk about on the next slide that are up for replacement in FY 26, total roughly around $6.4 million, and I mentioned this at the beginning about Public Safety IT, um, they don't just provide technical research, they do a wonderful job about project management and project implementation, so we really look at our 10-year CIP to see what's the bandwidth for each department and each department's subject matter experts to really implement all these projects, financially, operationally, so that the projects that we take on in a given year have the best chance of success for the project management side of things, but also to deliver the results for the people that, that really need them. So I think what we'll be showing here today in terms of the projects we're looking at in '26 have really been vetted by our team in terms of meeting both the criteria for the useful life of that equipment, but also the ability to deliver on those projects as well and get them deployed as soon as, as soon as possible. Uh, so without further ado, next slide, let's talk about some of those projects. Our list for this year features a few, um, I think that the two first ones are almost about 80% of the total, uh, the total for the year, and it is our call premise equipment, which is our 911 phone system, I mentioned that we had done that, um, you know, about eight years ago with the City of Alexandria, and we're looking to make those refreshments again, um, back then we did a lot of hardware and software refreshment, those things need, need that replenishment again, so this would be the first year of that project where we'd be looking to make some of those changes, but also starting that this year allows us to, uh, work with, um, Virginia Department of Emergency Management and get into some of the funds that they provide, uh, at the state level for, um, joint 911 operations, and there are a few grants that we can use to leverage this project, which is also fantastic. The next project on the list is the third year of the public safety radios, so again, you may have seen this one before because we try to spread these out over a few years to maximize the, um, the success of implementation, so this is the third year of replacing our radio fleet, it also allows us to break it up a little bit so that, um, you know, we can kind of learn from it, test out the new equipment, see how it works, and make sure that people have, uh, equipment that's within their useful life. The other projects we have on the list as well, um, replacing some of the technology for fire for their thermal imaging cameras, as we showed kind of on an earlier slide, and I would like to point out for all these projects, again, been researched that these are the years for, for replacement, uh, for, when these are up for their, their useful life. Um, for our police, we're looking at range improvements, uh, whether it be, you know, looking at things within the facility, doing some studies, um, on, on that facility as well, and then the last two are some of the technologies that support our video trailers in the field and our live scan technology within the sheriff's office. Next slide. Again, I think the biggest takeaway for us, um, from a public safety standpoint is that this is critical response equipment, um, it's, it's the core systems that we need on a daily basis, and we're going to continue to look at the best technology that's out there, we're going to continue to look at, um, you know, AI functionality, you may have heard us talk about that in our operating budgets as well, that it's something that we will continue to look at as a force multiplier to ensure that the technology that we're doing can help if we have staff shortages or staff challenges. And then, one of the biggest challenges that we'll have to look forward to in the future is the move from hardware replacement to software, I'm sure this came up in the DTS conversation as well, where some of the trends is, you know, not to be buying hardware but doing software as a service, which could lead to some higher operating costs in the out-years, but more reliable service, uh, on that equipment. So it's something that we have our, our eye on, we know that our PSIT folks are looking into that, giving us some of the best, uh, the best advice, and again, continuing to look at our 10-year plan, uh, as these are our critical systems. And I think that's the last slide, and, uh, again, just trying to move, move through that as well, uh, provide you all an overview of what Public Safety Capital is, uh, but any questions you may have, we'd be happy to answer them, and thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Bergen, I see Vice Chair deferenti.
No questions, Mr. Chair or Mr. Bergen, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues?
Well, just a, a quick comment first, um, thank you to our fire department, who yesterday, I think, very much reminded us of why this equipment and keeping ourselves up to date is so critical, uh, with multiple fire responses yesterday, um, we're really grateful to all the work that your guys and, and women put in, um, I think, uh, you know, it really is a good reminder of why having the most up-to-date, uh, technology for our public safety matters, um, and so that's a comment, a, a very quick question, um, related to what I asked in our facilities as well, uh, looking at the proposed short-term finance, um, these projects do not look like they are really scalable or deferrable, and I just want to confirm that, you know, these are pretty locked in, in terms of updating our, our radios and equipment, there's not really an option to come back later on and change that.
So, especially with our radios, we are two-thirds of the way through of, of switching over to radio sets that have really far superior technology, so right now it's really important that we push through and get that completed, so, um, yeah, I, the question here about if there's anything in here that is deferrable, I, I would like to say, the things that you don't see on this list, for example, I got requests for things that I think are really legitimate for vehicles from some of the, from the fire department and some other resources for police, we've already said, come back next year kind of thing, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and then, uh, I guess last question in terms of, you know, the larger, like, fire apparatus and whatnot, we'll check in maybe in July in terms of how the, the broader CIP is going.
Yeah, and I, not going to look, look over there, so, um, yeah, sure, we have, we have a regular replacement schedule for our fire apparatus, and I'm probably going to get wrong, it's on an eight-year cycle, we have a very, we have a guaranteed resale of them, and, you know, if we had to slow it down, I guess we could, but, you know, we have some guarant, guarantees about when they're going to be sold again, and the lead time on getting the production, it's, it's, I, it's even worse than electric buses, I mean, it takes, that's how bad it is, it takes three years, I think, four years, four years from the time we put in an order to get it delivered, so it's not like, you know, we cancel it and.
No, absolutely, no, and, um, I'm grateful for that, I don't think that we should, I just, you know, in terms of getting a handle on what we have any potential movement on and what we don't, I think it's helpful to understand.
Yeah, and, and you'll notice, and Karen, I think, spoke to this, that the, we, most of law enforcement is funded with a short-term financing, which is in the three-to-10-year space, so it's, you know, the, the place if you're looking on the, on capital investments to slow down would be the ones where it's more pure Pago, those kinds of things.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey, uh, Mrs. Spain.
Yes. Speaking of, and I was going to ask a question, but when you said resale, it made me think of something, um, being that our assets are usually five to 10 years, that's the lifespan of them, when we're done with those assets, i.e. radios, what's next, do, do we get anything in return, is there a resale?
Right, so actually, I'm going to ask either Will or Stu to come, Stu, why don't you come up and talk a little bit about, our radios, they, they, they're new, and then they go to other places that Stu will explain to you, and then they become doorstops, but, put the microphone on there, you have to press the button, introduce yourself.
Stuart Sands, I'm the Interoperability Radio System Manager in the County, the radios are part of the, uh, procurement, we have a trade-in program with Motorola, they give us money back and the radios actually go back to them, a large portion of them.
Thank you for that, that's great to know, we have numbers on how much we've, uh, received mark, uh, over the years on those?
It, it's built into the, the price of the radio that we, we purchase.
That we purchase on the next, er, ratio, thanks.
I have a question on the fire stations, uh, fire stations, fire trucks, um, given that we're likely in a even weirder time of tariffs and costs, um, and we're already at a four-year wait cycle, how does that figure into the planning, um, and should we get to a place where we're getting delays, can we delay the resale and/or mark it up if, if tariffs have taken over?
We're watching that closely, also some of the environmental and emission standards, we're trying to get ahead to make sure we stay in the production cycle, there's a lot of unknowns right now, what we do know is prices keep escalating, and yes, there's going to be shortages, so we're trying to position our orders to make sure it gets in the manufacturing stream.
And so if we, for instance, wanted to move to a 10-year cycle, I know traditionally we've chosen eight because we get the best return and it kind of, it works really well, I'm guessing that's a very hard thing to shift, given the unknowns, but is there an opportunity, uh, and likewise, if we, whenever we sell them, if the average cost of a firetruck has gone through the roof, do we get some piece of that as well, like the resale value?
Historically, the buyback is about one-third of the cost, maybe a little bit less, market forces will probably determine that moving forward, but if we lock that in before it's sold eight years on the front side of ordering, that's kind of pretty good security. Also, the, uh, trying, there's a sweet spot with the buyback value at eight years, but then we start going into year nine, year 10, and there's a lot of empirical data, then the maintenance costs start to drive up on the apparatus, it become less reliable and less available, so that, we've, we've kind of seen, and we, I think we've kind of also validated that eight-year mark is just kind of good for the apparatus, good for readiness, and also good for maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, the market for, um, this kind of apparatus is not very competitive, right?
Hard, there's a high interest in Arlington due to DES maintenance and the care we take of it in the department, it goes fast, sometimes it's known maybe one or two years.
For second-hand, because the original market is not very competitive, and therefore it is extremely expensive.
Very, yes.
Which, which brings us to the.
Yeah, and so, this is odd, but I have a question from the board, um, I'm being serious, you know, I'm not allowed to do that, but since Stuart is here and, and David, David here, we had a slide that Jeff put out there that talked about the Council of Governments, and I've talked about this a lot, which is that we have, and you see it all the time, it was on the news last night, I was watching NBC News, in the United States of America right now, for body-worn cameras, Axon has the market, they're almost, uh, I'm going to get, my economics is sloppy, I'm a not.
It's a monopoly.
Monopoly, right.
At best, a legoland.
Or something like that, and so the same thing is, is almost true when it comes to radios and also some of these other equipment, but, but Stu can tell you a little bit about if the Council of Governments, we are able to ride contracts of other jurisdictions, which is nice, but if we actually are able to sit at the table as a conglomerate and negotiate, all the, all the NCR jurisdictions sitting on one side of the table and the providers on the other side would get better prices, Stu, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Right now, Arlington County probably has about 2,000, 2,500 subscribers, and that's what we call our radio subscribers, but when we come together with the, the Council of Governments, the region, what we call the COG, the region, it's about 186,000 radios, and all of our radios are interoperable with any other radio system within the COG, so if Chief Pavlit sends an apparatus into Prince George's County, our, our firefighters switch channels on their radios and they're talking to Prince George's County, if they go into DC to work on a DC incident, they're on a DC radio, and conversely, all day long, because of mutual, automatic mutual aid, our folks are running back and forth between Alexandria and Arlington, Arlington into Fairfax and Fairfax into us, the fire yesterday, apparatus were moved all around the region, and there was no need to have to grab radios or have a, a, an issue with communications because of the interoperability we have, so we've, we've sat down with Motorola and said, look, we're the biggest, uh, dog on the, on the block, you need to talk to us, we're bigger than FDNY, we're bigger than New York, we're bigger than LA.
So my question, and really comment for the board, is to the extent you talk to your colleagues in other jurisdictions, if you can get them to think about the purchasing power we would all have if we had some uniform standards, I know the fire chief worked on getting breathing apparatus, um, there are so many different standards out there in the region, what Stu just told you is a success story, but there's so many other places where we could succeed on that, and I've been talking, and we've all been talking to the COG staff about that, and they're working very, very diligent, but diligently, but I think this is actually a political, more at the political level.
It, it is true, but, uh, to, to that end, as far as I'm concerned, I know that the different committees of COG, especially the Public Safety Committee, has been advocating for that, and it is across jurisdictions, to the degree that they are represented there, there is actually understanding that this is the, the way to go. So, I don't know, colleagues, this is something for all of us to decide, but this is something we, we should consider very, very closely.
We need state legislation to do this in addition to the COG stuff, or is it, or is it just?
For, for that kind of equipment.
No, the, we have the purchasing authority to do interstate conversations like this, and, and I'll let Chief give you an example, I mean, because we have on the breathing apparatus, we were able to do it, but there are so many other pieces of equipment, and frankly, it, it comes down to, it should, should Prince George's County have the same kind of firetrucks that Arlington County has, try to have that conversation. You can talk about that.
Yeah, so there would be other flavors of manufacturers, but that thing, that capability, we can have a common purchasing, and then jurisdictions can decide brand X, brand Y, brand Z, meets that specification, comes into the pricing. That's just all the way around. We can lower all of our collective pricing.
Other questions?
I mean, I think I would just close because when we're whenever we talk about public safety, I just, as we started, want to close on how grateful we are for the amazing excellence, both of each individual, but also as we saw in the IT here, as we see in the COG, we have tremendously led and continue to lead on collaboration. And you guys are the best at it because lives depend on it, so you practice it every day. But it's really a source of pride for us and an inspiration for all of the rest of us and the departments, and thank you.
And if I could add just two comments. First of all, thanks to Jeff Bergen. He is our FEMA Whisperer, and he, we get the highest rate of reimbursement from FEMA. We got it during COVID. We continue to get it. So he does a fantastic job. And then thanks to the public safety team. We, at some point, will actually bring our public safety IT team here to make a presentation because I make fun of my colleagues in the region. We've done it for almost 15 years, and they haven't done it at all. We have one set of people who work for all our public safety agencies.
It's amazing. Yeah, it's great, and it's what we should do in a lot of other places, too. So thank you.
Coming up, preparedness month. Maybe we have to schedule this presentation then. So thank you. I have, this concludes. Thank you, everybody, Mr. Bergen, as well.
Thank you very much.
I have a question about the life-size apparatus of the sheriff, which I will follow up. Thank you. Yeah, I will ask him directly later. It's not for now. Transportation. Not Evelyn loves the rules on the Tuk Tuk.
Tuk Tuk.
You know, the Tuk Tuk soon. She wants it every night.
I did see. This is pretty.
I might I might remind everybody that we had a board member here and several times a chair who thought that Tuk Tuk is actually a solution for for microtransit in Arlington. And I can tell you that in the tropical nine months of Virginia, Tuk Tuk could be working.
Every idea from a board member is brilliant.
Exactly. Of course, keep going. So thank you for being with us.
I'm going to turn it, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Crawford, who will start us, the little green ring there. Yeah, there you go.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. We're glad to be here today. My name is Sarah Crawford. I'm the Assistant Director of Transportation, and my colleague, our Transportation Funds Manager, Vijitha Huffman, will join me in presentation. And of course, we're supported by our Division Director, Hui Wong, if there are any questions afterwards. So if we could move to Slide Two, we'd like to start with our map that shows projects under construction and those that will be entering construction in 2025. Great. So everyone wants to talk about the art operations and maintenance facility. Our facilities folks did, and I will. Various points in our presentation that did complete with a ribbon cutting last year, but we are moving into the Phase Two electrification. And we have a number of other projects that are under construction right now. There are intersection safety improvements, such as George Mason and Park or North Ohio Street, which intersects with North McKinley at that point. We do have some projects that will be entering construction this year, including the Intersection Safety Project at Military Road in Nellie Custis, the Protected Bike Lane Extension on Army Navy Drive. And our Walter Reed, Walter Reed Drive Complete Streets Project will follow the APS project to complement the needs around the Career Center along Walter Reed Drive. As we move to Slide Three, we'd like to talk a little bit about how we are looking to achieve equity in our transportation program to ensure that as we look towards future CIPs and capital funding allocations, that we benefit the needs of all in our community, we're establishing equity as a cornerstone of our transportation policy work. We are currently in the process to refresh our master transportation plan, which is the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. This process is called Arlington's Transportation Future. I hope you all have heard about it. And this process will set policy guidance for how we allocate the right-of-way in the future and how we establish modal priorities and corridors throughout the county. So data on the screen shows outreach from Phase One of engagement, and we're just now wrapping up Phase Two. We don't yet have the data on it. In addition to the comprehensive outreach and responses that we heard from a very diverse set of community members, we also conducted listening sessions that were very tailored to different interest groups throughout our community to find out in these small, tailored focus group meetings, what does and does not work for members of their community traveling through Arlington. And we got a rich set of data that helps feed into the vision and goals, the engagement that we just had. Now, moving to Slide Four, as Ms. Huffman will review shortly, you'll note that a small portion of our transportation funding actually comes from the County General Fund and PEGO or bond. Most of our studies, or by and large, all of our studies and our projects are funded with a mix of legislatively enabled revenues that are raised locally and restricted to transportation use by the state code, or they're from competitive regional, state, or federal grant programs. The exception to that is the Crystal City Pentagon City TIF, which was established to fund county-constructed infrastructure improvements that support the implementation of the Crystal City Sector Plan, and then now by extension, the Pentagon City Sector Plan. The TIF and TCF both allow us to leverage a considerable amount of external funding sources. And so if you look at the slide, we have our local sources at the top that we have programmed as strategically as we can to meet to best meet the eligible uses outlined in the state code. And we use those sources to match either required grant match requirements or to put forward a county portion so that we're kind of sweetening the deal for some of our external funding agencies to partner with us on funding for the regional competitive programs from MBTA and MBTC, and also state competitive programs. Much of our federal funding comes through the state. However, as we've discussed many times in the past, we have tried to secure federal funds through the US DOT programs. We've not had a lot of success at this time. So most of the federal funding, as we shift to the next slide, is really passed through the state. And so this is the slide that we brought forward and the DES operating budget presentation that was referenced earlier today. And I wanted to spend just a moment talking about the difference in the fourth column over between the pass-through and the direct sources of funding. VDOT or DRPT administer most of the funds, and they have those federal funds in hand. And so while we're watching as closely as well anybody at this point, what's going on with the federal funding landscape? Those funds are with the state, and we are actively charging down those grants. So we feel some level of comfort. We do have direct funding with FTA. And as you'll note, on the Crystal City Metro Station Project, we've mostly expended that grant, so we're feeling we've got the funding. So that's great. We are in active conversation with FTA on the Columbia Pike Transit Stations to ensure that as we implement the remainder of the stations along Columbia Pike, we will have access to those funds and trying to get any sense that we can from them in terms of if there's any changes. So now I think I'll shift the presentation to Ms. Huffman.
Okay, so over the next several slides, we will be going over our PEGO request. So PEGO actually supports a number of our programs across the county, and you can see several of those depicted on this slide, including bridge maintenance, our paving program, parking meters. And what's important is we do limit our PEGO request to programs and projects that are not eligible for our dedicated sources of funding. So we're very cognizant of that. So I think with that, we can move to the next slide. So our 2026 proposed PEGO totals $5.1 million, and it goes across a number of projects and programs that are all listed there. And a number of these rely on a combination of PEGO and bonds. And we will be discussing each of these further on the next few slides. But first, we just wanted to give you a snapshot of our transportation assets. And I'm just going to quickly highlight the key changes compared to a year ago. So towards the middle of the page in the green box, the art assets. So we've got about 90 fewer bus stops, and that's reflective of the discontinued art and Womara routes. Then in the box right next to it on bridges, we have two additional bridges this year. One of them is a pedestrian bridge in the Barcroft neighborhood, and the second is a culvert at our new art operations and maintenance facility. And then in the box immediately to the right of that, the Capital Bike Share box, we have almost 100 additional bikes this year, and many of those are e-bikes. And then you'll also notice we have shown statistics for shared micro mobility devices, or rather, shared mobility devices, and those are operated by private operators. The picture there is a little mixed. We have 200 fewer scooters, based on the permits that were approved this year. On e-bikes, we have about 150 more e-bikes. So that's actually a really great story there. On the lower part of the page, actually, the metric I wanted to really highlight the most is the very last metric that you see, and that is for the in-street devices. That's a new metric that we've added to the slide this year, and that represents all the various safety devices that we are deploying across the county in support of our Vision Zero goals. And it's really important to highlight those because it's a number of different devices. And those can be seen on the Vision Zero page on the Arlington County website, and it could include tactical speed humps. It may include turn hardening devices, but it's just a number of them. And the reason we wanted to highlight them is as we deploy more and more of those in pursuit of our safety goals, in the years to come, we will require additional PEGO dollars to maintain them, because it's great to deploy them, but they have to be maintained. So with that, I think we can move on now to the paving slide. So paving is a critical user of PEGO. It relies on both bond and PEGO funding, mostly bonds, because bonds are used for the mill and overlay. But PEGO is crucial to the program because it helps us maintain our paved roads with slurry seal and micro-surfacing. And it's really cost-effective, because when you consider what different things cost, micro-surfacing and slurry seal are very, very cost-effective. And if you don't maintain the roads, then you have to do the mill and overlay more often, and that costs two to three times what slurry seal and micro-surfacing will cost. And then if the road condition deteriorates to the point where we can't even do the mill and overlay, then we have to do a full-depth rebuild. And at that point, the costs really escalate. The cost of a full-depth rebuild is seven times higher than the cost of mill and overlay. And mill and overlay, as I explained, is two to three times more expensive than slurry seal and the micro-surfacing. So it's really smart financially to invest in the program in terms of the PEGO. We do measure the health of our streets with a metric called PCI. It's an Army Corps of Engineers metric. And the PCI for 2024 is 83.7. It's slightly higher than what we had measured for fiscal 20, for calendar year 2023. It's not a huge surprise that it's improved, because the full impacts of this winter would not be reflected in this metric. And in fact, what I'd like to do is kind of draw your attention to the graph that you see there, because that shows the relationship, in a sense, between our investments in the paving program and the PCI. So the blue bars are a proxy for our investment. They actually represent the lane miles that have been paved every year, and it goes back all the way to the early 2000s. And the blue line shows the PCI. So what's important to emphasize here is PCI is a lagging indicator. So would we underinvest in the in maintaining our streets, we won't observe it in the PCI metric right away. In fact, you'll notice that the PCI metric is very low in the years from 2012 to 2015, and that comes after years of underinvestment in our streets. So again, it's just important to keep in mind that it is a lagging indicator, and if we don't invest in the streets, we will eventually have to then spend really big dollars on doing full-depth rebuilds and all. And the other point I wanted to mention on this slide is that one of the more immediate manifestations of the winter that we've experienced is with the potholes. And from our current estimates, we will have about 20% more potholes in fiscal '25 compared to fiscal '24. And potholes, of course, are a nuisance when you hit them with your car. But if you hit a pothole when you're on a bicycle or on a scooter, it can actually result in really severe injuries. So that's something that we we really make sure we keep an eye on. And then I know there's been a lot of talk about inflation, and actually, we just got our bids back for for our slurry seal contract, and the price has gone up quite a bit year over year. So that's the other thing that I think we will really face from the budgetary pressure. It's going to be a challenging year for us from a paving standpoint. On the next slide, we have our proactive zone maintenance program for our sidewalks. And we do, our goal is to maintain them on a 10-year maintenance interval. On the the map that you see, what you see there are the 20 zones that we have divided Arlington County into. And the goal is to do two zones every year, one north of Route 50 and one south of Route 50. Also, we should mention that we have developed a condition assessment for our sidewalks. And compared to 2021, which we, when we did a survey of the sidewalks relative to the more recent survey that we did in 2024, the sidewalk conditions have improved based on our metric from 83 to 88. So that's, that's pretty good, and that comes after the tripping hazard blitz that we had done for the first few years of this program, and now we have started the concrete zone maintenance. We also wanted to highlight that we have an interactive tool on the county website where you can actually go and see the sidewalk condition. You can actually zoom in on a neighborhood, you can even click on a street, and you can see the metrics for that street. Think we can move, okay. Bridge maintenance, another user of both PEGO and bonds. We have 38 bridges in the county, and over the last several years, the county made the decision to really invest in our bridge maintenance, and we have seen the results of that. And the condition of our bridges has really improved. So in fact, we've been able to reduce our PEGO ask as a result of that. On our bridge renovation program, which is a separate program, we have rebuilt a couple of bridges and also enhanced bridges. And in every case, we have made it, you know, made an effort to enhance the bike and pet facilities on the bridge, for example, the West Leeb Road Bridge that we rebuilt, on the Shollington Road Bridge where we added the bike and pet facility. We've also incorporated public art. And then we have one more bridge that's coming up for a rebuild, and that's the Arlington Ridge Road Bridge. And once that bridge is rebuilt, then our overall metrics, because we aim for between six and seven on the bridge condition rating, which is an FHWA metric, our goal is to be between a six and seven. And right now, Arlington Bridge is rated as a four, and once it is rebuilt, all our bridges will be at our, at our intended metric goal. Signals and ITS maintenance is another area sort of where it is a critical infrastructure that we do need to maintain, and this program covers the inspection, repair, and maintenance of all of our signalized intersections. We have 302 of those. In addition, it also maintains ITS devices that are not part of the signals, but for example, the flashing beacons or, you know, the count stations. So the program covers all of it. It also covers the structural inspections of our signal poles, specifically the ones that are masked arm, right where there's quite a bit of weight that's out there. And the pie chart that you see on this slide shows sort of the state of the various signal poles. We have about 5% of them, you'll notice, that are sort of red in critical condition, and those will be remedied over the coming year. But in general, with our signals, the maintenance is really crucial because we are able to prolong the life of our assets with regular maintenance. Streetlights are another program where we use PEGO and bonds. We have roughly 8,500 county-owned streetlights, another 11,000 of them are owned by Dominion. The county-owned streetlights are Carlisle in design, and you can see it, it's depicted there on the slide. And the proposed budget combining PEGO and bonds for fiscal '26 is close to 1.5 million. It will be paying for a variety of items. One is the Dominion Streetlight Conversion. That is actually nearing completion, so that's really great news. It'll also pay to convert the county LEDs from the first generation to second generation. We still have a few thousand of those remaining in the first generation, and those are the priority. And then, of course, it covers major repairs for our streetlights, including conduit repairs, you know, the conduits that are under the streetlights. I think one point, one thing I did want to highlight is that this program has really been impacted by inflation. I mean, I know there was some talk of inflation in Ms. Tally's presentation. And just by way of example, pre-COVID, a streetlight pole could be purchased for under $1,000. Now we're looking at a cost between $2,500 to $3,000 for that same streetlight pole. So streetlights and signals have both been really impacted by inflation, and of course, the tariff situation is not going to be good news for this either.
Okay, now we'd like to talk about some of our Complete Streets programs. Street Safety Improvements is the transportation-specific capital program that funds the design and implementation of transportation-related Vision Zero improvements. Street Safety Improvements contains a mix of PEGO Street Safety Improvements, um, contains a mix of PEGO and TCF, much like most of our Complete Streets programs. And the PEGO that's allocated to street safety improvements is used for very specific items that are not eligible for TCF per the state code restrictions. And these, some of these you can see on the screen. Pilot projects where we're testing treatments to see if they work in terms of reducing speed or reducing injuries at certain locations. Tactical deployments, which are temporary in nature, um, and continued safety audits of our high injury network. We do have, in addition to the one million dollars, an additional two hundred and fifty thousand to support the implementation of the photo speed program as well. I'd also like to take this moment to talk a little bit about Vision Zero more broadly. Vision Zero isn't just about transportation improvements. It is an enterprise-wide program that's built on collaboration between departments and relies on community support and buy-in as well. We do have the Vision Zero Action Plan, which the Board adopted in 2021. And we're set for a five-year update that will begin later this year. Through the collaborations that you see and some of the examples on this screen, and through the chart that you see, various departments have developed new programs that are geared towards encouraging behavior modifications of the traveling public or incorporating elements of pilot or tactical treatments into existing either capital or education programs. And I think what's nice about this chart is it does show that this truly is enterprise-wide, and we're all working together to try to bring us to our goal in 2030 of zero serious injuries and fatalities. And of course, we do, as I mentioned before, rely on education and the members of the traveling public to do their part as well in terms of moving safely through our right-of-way. I'd like to shift to our Bike Arlington and Walk Arlington capital programs. These programs use a very small amount of PEGO, um, and they're mostly funded by TCF or external sources for our, um, capital projects. The PEGO allocated to these programs allow the teams to address issues that arise as part of reporter problem or Vision Zero safety audits, um, or through partner department projects potentially. If DPR builds a park and there's a noticeable gap in, in the sidewalk network, we can jump in with this funding and help remedy that issue. Um, they range from tactical treatments or sometimes implementation that's semi-maintenance in nature, like I just mentioned, in terms of the sidewalk enhancement. However, about a third of the Bike Arlington funds are used to pay for the data service and maintenance for the Bike Counter Program. And you can see some of the different models of bike counters that we have that are on the screen here. And they're deployed throughout Arlington. And while it's interesting to understand how people are using our trails and making some of these connections, the data that we collect through these is absolutely vital in incorporating into our grant applications to make the case for why trails matter, why protected bike lanes matter, why these things can achieve moving more people, which is kind of the, the phrase that is used in many of our external funding applications, um, moving more people through Arlington. I, I also wanted to mention Neighborhood Complete Streets on here. It does have zero in PEGO this year. Um, it has a good amount of TCF, which it's using to advance, um, some capital projects. But it does use a limited amount of PEGO for pilot projects, such as the Shared Street Pilot that we just implemented, um, last year. They do have a small amount in reserve that, um, we feel they could carry forward a small number of pilot projects, should that be something that the Complete Streets Commission would like to do. On the next slide, um, we're talking a little bit more about assets. Uh, Ms. Huffman mentioned a number of different programs. Streetlights, our traffic signals program. We have tens of thousands of assets in our right-of-way. And the Transportation Asset Management Program allows us to ensure that not only do we know where these things are, we know their condition, we can anticipate lifecycle, we can anticipate problems. And we can do so through a variety of different cool and very useful graphics that smart engineers understand better than I do through Cartograph. I mean, I could not explain a lot of what's happening on the screen, but the people that monitor this on a daily basis are able to use this in a way that helps us better anticipate our PEGO needs for future requests. Um, we also have our parking, just a little more on that slide. Our parking meter, um, program, um, obviously is something that we're using to, um, collect revenue for people using our precious right-of-way to park their cars. But it also requires maintenance and replacement. And so the small amount of PEGO will go to routine maintenance, um, this year. But I, I did want to highlight that we are anticipating a fairly major, um, maintenance replacement, um, in fiscal 2028. And trail light maintenance is a very small element of what we do. We have some reserves to carry forward any of the incidental repairs that may come about this coming fiscal year.
So we will now move to TCF. And so TCF has the two components. One is made up of the CNI tax, uh, the assessment, the extra assessment on commercial industrial properties. We are forecasting that to be twenty-three million dollars in fiscal '26. And that is actually six percent lower than we had in our fiscal '25 adopted, reflecting what's going on with property tax assessments on commercial industrial properties. NVTA local, that is sourced by the add-on sales tax, and that is projected to be twelve million dollars. And that is going up a little bit, uh, by three percent. You know, there's inflation and all of those factors is, are, are helping, I guess. Um, so then moving on to the next slide. TCF funds a number of our projects and programs. You can see, uh, several of our Complete Streets programs, also a few of our transit programs. And then also, very importantly, it is crucial in funding operations and maintenance, including for capital bike share, because there is an operations and maintenance component, program administration, and transit operations. The TCF pays for a number of art routes. Um, on that, I should mention that because of our budgetary pressures, there is no art expansion that is contemplated currently for fiscal '26. And further, as we build out projects, PEGO is needed to help us maintain all of these projects in a state of good repair. So on this next slide, you can see the budget summary for TCF. Uh, the expenditures we're forecasting will go down by about twenty percent. And this is as our Columbia Pike project winds down, as well as our Art Operations and Maintenance Facility is completed. Um, it is actually, it has achieved substantial completion, but we are, you know, next year we will be getting the, the BEB equipment in here, in there as well. Uh, on revenue, it is going down three percent, and that is driven by the decrease in the commercial industrial tax. And then finally, I should note that on staffing, we are increasing our staffing on TCF from forty-two point five to forty-three point five. And that is reflective of a capital bike share contractor position that we are switching over to be a county FT, county staff person. And actually, we have a slide in a, uh, later in the presentation that Ms. Crawford will, will review.
So I'd like to talk a little bit about the types of projects that we fund with TCF. We don't go into as great of detail, um, during the budget presentation as we will and have during CIP presentations. But I did want to give a little bit of a flavor. And so the projects on the three top pictures represent the types of projects that we have implemented with TCF. Small bus stop improvement projects and/or curb enhancement projects that provide more refuge for pedestrians crossing the street. We have trail connection projects that are associated with our bridge projects and our bridge program as well. And of course, our Art Operations and Maintenance Facility, um, which, as we all know, is open and fantastic. Um, but we will be adding that electrification structure this coming fiscal year. On the bottom of the screen, we have two very different photographs, uh, from Columbia Pike. TCF is also used for really large-scale capital infrastructure projects that make a transformative difference for a corridor. And in the case of Columbia Pike, realize a vision that was set fifteen to twenty years ago. And so the, the photograph on the right is delightful. There's wide sidewalks, there's turn lanes that provide protected movements for vehicles, there's enhanced bus stops. But on the left, we see the pain that it takes us all to get there. And by us all, it's not just, of course, staff or you all, it's our community as well. And we understand the impact that a year or two of construction has on people who are trying to use the roadway, whether they're walking, taking the bus, or driving. And the businesses that, um, are, are trying to make sure that they can sustain themselves through construction. So I wanted to highlight some of the activities that we do on a regular basis to ensure that we are trying to keep, um, as close contact with our community during construction on Columbia Pike. But we also use this model for other construction projects throughout the county. So our staff regularly update the project page. That's kind of a given. But when we do that, we push that information out. And if we are able to get the information from the contractor, we try to provide at least two weeks' notice of any major roadway reconfiguration changes, transit service impact, so that people can anticipate any impacts they may have on their morning, evening, daytime routines. And so that the businesses can anticipate how movements to their specific locations will be impacted. We host in-person pop-up events four times a month along the construction corridor to provide that information to people that just might be walking by. Maybe they're not on our listserv, maybe they don't think to check the county website. We want to make sure that we're engaging people who are using the environment and providing them with that information so that they, they, they can make those choices that will hopefully help them in traveling better. And then, of course, we go door-to-door to all of the businesses when we're making any major changes in construction to try to ensure that if we can anticipate any needs that they may have, we can try to work with our contractor to pivot if possible. And of course, there's the utility work that's going on as well, adding another element of coordination, both between the county staff but also with our contractor. And inasmuch as we can have advanced notice on any utility, coordination, or utility shut-offs, we provide that information to the community as soon as we're aware of it. So I wanted to, on the next slide, talk a little bit about the FTE that Ms. Huffman mentioned earlier. TCF funds over full ti- forty full-time staff. And this FTE is being proposed, um, to be added to our portfolio as a cost savings, actually. Um, the Arlington County Commuter Services Program operates the Capital Bike Share Program. And the predominant, um, staffing for ACCS is contract staff. As you all may remember, you adopted the commuter assistance strategic plan in November. And it provided some guidance on staffing for ACCS, not necessarily to shift the balance in a significant way, but to shift key positions that have accountability over contracts or financial responsibilities from contractors to county staff. The, the, um, plan recommended this because it wanted to ensure that the county has that direct line of communication to the services that we're paying for in terms of capital bike share. It's LIFT. LIFT is the regional operator for capital bike share. We need to be directly overseeing our, our coordination with LIFT to ensure that the county's interests are, are protected in that sense. So this position would take over the direct management of that contract and interactions, would also oversee the subcontract staff that are doing the day-to-day sort of deployment out in the field of capital bike share infrastructure. But they would also oversee the shared mobility device permit program, which is enabled by the county code, another area where we wanted to have direct oversight over the regulatory requirements in the code. Since I'm bringing up capital bike share, I wanted to give a little bit more of an update on capital bike share on the next couple of slides. 2024 was a historic year for capital bike share. I think we talked about the sort of ramping up of that at the budget presentation last year. It continued. Every month was a record-setting month in, in respect to the, the prior month. I want to draw your attention now to the categories. Under each category on the screen, there's the year-over-year increase for Arlington trips. As compared with the year-over-year increase regionally, Arlington's outperforming our regional partners. This means that we've really established biking, biking on the whole, but using capital bike share as a mode that is expected and is a viable and safe way to travel around Arlington. And that's not just through everything we're doing with capital bike share. It's all of the capital investments that we've mentioned through TCF and TIF. Um, and so we're really excited to see these numbers. We assume that this coming fiscal year or calendar year will prove to outdo this year. And one of the reasons is because we invest a significant amount of funding in the maintenance and operations of capital bike share, as Ms. Huffman mentioned. We have two million in fiscal '26 for operations and maintenance, and that comes out of TCF. We also have 1.2 million, um, in fiscal '26 for expansion, for new stations, for e-bikes and pedal bikes. But we're really focused on e-bikes because as we see on the next slide, the usage of e-bikes, which is in the kind of fluorescent turquoise, has increased exponentially. It, it is to the point where more trips are on e-bikes than they are on the regular pedal bikes, because that's what people want. And so we need to invest our dollars there. Exactly, because Arlington's so hilly. Um, so we believe that continuing this investment in capital bike share, directly managing our relationship with LIFT to ensure that operations are as we expect through our contract, will continue to provide the service to our community in a way that they expect. I'd like to shift our focus to TIF now. Um, the Crystal City Tax Increment Finance District provides funding at a small level for investments in Pentagon City and Crystal City. But the real utility of TIF for transportation projects is our ability to leverage that external funding by having the county put some funding towards these projects. Other, our external partners are much more interested in being funding partners as well. So looking at Crystal City East Entrance on the left side of the screen, which is really cool because it is a very deep hole in the ground right now, where it will then connect to the metro station. The majority of that funding, over ninety million dollars or around ninety million, is external funding. So we're contributing about fifty to sixty million dollars, or fifty million dollars of, um, local funds. Much of that is TIF. And so that, that ability to leverage such a, a large amount of external funds allows transformative projects like this to happen. Army Navy Drive, um, the Complete Streets Project is a smaller example at fifteen million or so. But it has a really diverse mix of regional and federal funding, uh, with a very small amount of TIF. But that amount of TIF gets us to the point where we are able to execute the project. I'd like to point out the cycle track that you can see roughly in the center of the picture. It's yet another example of the type of capital infrastructure that we're building throughout the county to provide that safe and separated access for cyclists. So that, again, we're providing that not only is, as taking a bike an option, it is just the obvious choice for some people and the primary choice that they will make for their trips. And so with that, I will hand it back to Ms. Huffman.
So here we can see the budget summary for TIF. Uh, on expenditures, we are forecasting expenditures to come down by quite a bit. And this is reflective of our Army Navy Complete Streets Project, uh, getting to completion, as well as a, a shift in the fund mix on the Crystal City East Entrance Project, which, as Ms. Crawford mentioned, is primarily TIF. But we are shifting it a little bit more towards TCF CNI in fiscal '26, just to balance out the funds. Um, I, the, the staffing is going to stay constant at 6.5. And then I should just mention that, uh, we are recommending keeping the TIF percent at 25%. Oh, also, I should just quickly touch on revenue. Revenue you can see is dropping by quite a bit, fourteen point three percent, which is a much sharper drop than you saw on TCF CNI, for example. And TIF is actually sourced from both commercial, industrial, and residential. But TIF is inherently a volatile, uh, revenue source because it is off, it is, it compares to a base year, which is 2011. So when things are looking good, TIF disproportionately benefits. But when things are looking down, then it really gets hit. And that's, that's why you see the big drop in revenue. And then finally, our wrap-up slide. So just wanted to, again, just reiterate that the constraints on PEGO are definitely going to put some serious budgetary pressures on our programs. And I know there was some talk earlier about, you know, what things are critical, how do we prioritize? And we hope that through our presentation today, we've provided you a good understanding of why our PEGO needs for our programs are really critical, just to ensure that we can maintain things in a state of good repair. Uh, TCF, as we mentioned, does continue to pay for various operating and administrative expenditures. And I should point out that these have been growing. And in fiscal '26, uh, almost forty percent of TCF will be utilized for operations and program administration. Um, and then, as I indicated earlier, because of budgetary constraints, we have made the decision, or we are proposing delaying TSB implementation. Um, and then, as Ms. Crawford mentioned, we are going to the process to update the MTP to identify our next set of priorities. And, uh, as I mentioned, TIF, we are recommending keeping at 25%.
So that is the conclusion of our presentation, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you. That was quite comprehensive. It's an, it's always an opportunity to just get a, you know, a, a, a full, uh, overview. So, uh, colleagues, I see. I start that side.
Mrs. Payne or Ms. Cunningham?
Um, okay, I've got two questions to start, um, on the paving. I'm gonna have to ask it twice. On the paving, so if I understood correctly, uh, the slurry, like the cool preventative maintenance that we do can't be covered by other funds, is that right? Like, it has to be PEGO? Okay, that's really helpful because it, um, that was not clear to me before. Uh, and then on bike share, which I'm sure others will groove on as well because it's super cool. cool, do we have any thoughts on how Bike Share can evolve to, and mobility devices, to serve elderly and younger kids and families? Like, it's serving such a cool and large portion of our community, and yet it's maybe not quite perfect for some of those use cases. Are there things being tried, or can we try them?
So on the latter, I know that there is a restriction on age for Capital Bike Share, and I believe scooters as well at 16. I am not a lawyer, so I'm not going to opine on why that's in place. That's something that I am not as familiar with, and I know that our regional operating group of the member jurisdictions for Capital Bike Share, that's a forum we could discuss that at. Regarding your earlier question about seniors or people like myself who might not feel comfortable on two wheels, might want a little bit more stability, I know that some of the vendors, and I don't know if Lyft is one of them, are looking at different types of vehicles, whether they're tricycles or something just with a little bit more stability that might allow someone who may be a bit more challenged with balance to be able to ride.
Great, and child seats as well would be another question. So even if the kids can't rent them, can you take your daycare using? Because that was always the hardest use case.
Right, thank you.
Mrs. Spain.
Yeah. Well, one, I want to echo what our county board chair stated, probably one of the most thorough briefs I've received to date, and I just want to give a shout-out to Ms. Huffman. I really felt like I was in college. You were just really, I mean, your voice, your articulation, like, I was like, Willie. So thank you for a wonderful presentation, to both of you. I just want to go to Slide 3 for a second, and you can imagine, I'm going to bring this to the forefront. One, thank you for your outreach in the community through transportation as we are taking on this Arlington transportation and its future. I wonder if you can talk a little bit about some of this engagement, what you're seeing, some of the organizations perhaps you've been engaged with so far, and I might have another question not related to this, but can you talk a little bit about that? Because, you know, as we plan for the next five, 10, 20 years, right, critically important, we really do our work right now to figure out what people are thinking. And I will tell you, from my travels in the community, there are folks who are, you know, whether it's our folks on bikes, or scooters, or walking, or running, or paths, all great. They are, we know who they are, but there's also a group that's missing, right? So can you talk a little bit about that and what you've been doing?
Sure. So we actually started Phase 2 of engagement at the Field of Heritage Festival, and a lot of the feedback that our staff got during that event was, who are you and what is this? Which was like, oh geez, but at the same time, it's great, because that means we are reaching people who would not otherwise be engaged or involved, and bringing them into the process, finding ways to ensure that we're keeping that communication, whether making sure we're giving them a takeaway or doing sign-ins to make sure we're able to then push out information to people. So events like that, not just doing an open house at Central Library, which we've done and which has been successful, going to scheduled events, community events, in populations that have the response, I don't know who you are and why you're here, those are the types of conversations that we want to have. And then you can see on the screen, I'm not going to name all of them, I can name the ones on the screen here, because some of the people that we've had focus group meetings with, it's just not groups we want to elevate, because there are sensitivities in the community about giving feedback in a way that you're concerned may then be used against you or people that you can relate to. So especially students, and especially students and then parents of diverse backgrounds. So the Arlington Hispanic Parents Association, for example, is trying to get at a population that travels differently to school, both in terms of students who, you know, maybe their parents are telling them how they should travel to school, but how do the students want to travel? You know, learning from them ways that weaken them plan for them into the future. ECDC, of course, Bugata tenants, and trying to go where these people are, any people, just any groups, rather than saying, well, okay, we're having a meeting at Bosman Center, please come join us. People don't come to that.
Yeah. I just want to, you know, some folks say you praise people in private but also praise them in public, and I do want to give you praise for that, you and the team, because I've heard, I've seen you firsthand, and I want to thank you for the work that you've been doing to reach out to the community in a very unique way, and so hats off to you on that. As we talk about, and you brought up earlier, I did not know this, in the Street Devices, 913, and then you made a reference to, you know, if we want to stick, you know, that's going to cost us additional funds down the road, you can see. Any estimation at this point of what we may see in the future on cost incurred with that?
We would have to get back to you on that.
Yeah. I mean, it's ultimately going to be a cost, to your point earlier, right, that we can't take our eye off the ball. I think those are good measures, those different signs and devices?
Yeah.
Well, that's a
A million dollars.
That's a good question, and one that we're evaluating. I'll give you a little bit of perspective. We have about 10 miles of protected bike lanes, and in those protected bike lanes, you see the white ballers in there every 20 feet, right? So you can estimate from that, there's actually 2,600 of those, and this year, we found that we're having to replace a lot of them. So we see that ramping up. So like what we've ordered in the past is about 600 per year, we're doing about 900 this year, so things are increasing, let's say, about a quarter to a third more in terms of these tactical devices. So it is increasing. The good thing is that they're easy to replace and they're cheap, but it does take a lot of staff time, so.
Yeah, I think any projections we can get on that in the future, because it all ties in, right? For maintenance purposes, really, we want to keep those, it'd be beneficial for us, so thank you. The last thing, which I was, and I guess this was also, don't go anywhere, come on back for a little bit. I just want to chill and chat with you all that day.
All right.
No, just lastly, because this was another, like, surprise that came to, the streetlights. You know, I'm going to call this, I have streetlights, blah, blah. I did not realize, that's another cost you're talking about, coupled with tariffs and steel and all of that's going to go on. I would assume that down the road, there's going to be a significant cost there perhaps with streetlights. Someone shaking their head.
Yes.
Yeah. I think we need to understand.
The material costs are increasing
Yeah.
on that. And, you know, part of what you see here is an upgrade in the technologies, that we can communicate better with the programs that, you know, the infrastructure that's there in the streetlights.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for answering those questions. I'm sure my colleagues have some. I was going to get into the paving piece, but my colleague Susan already got onto that. Thank you very much. Those are all my questions, Mr. Shear.
Thank you, Mr. Spain, and I just want to recognize Ms. Muratovic. After we get through a first round of questions, we will hear from our Transportation Commission.
Excellent.
Yes, yes. Ms. Coffey.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think, so inflationary pressures on all of this, I feel like we're very conscious that everything we do is costing more these days. Do we have concerns about this year's capital program as things go out to bid that we may not be able to cover everything we're proposing to do this year?
There are a lot of projects, so I was just running through them in my head. You know, we do include a fairly generous contingency on our capital projects that attempts to anticipate things like this, it is, in some ways, unpreparable, but I think for our larger-scale capital projects, complete streets capital projects, anyway, I feel pretty good about the cost estimates that we've developed, and the recent bids that we've gotten confirm that we're in the right ballpark on those. Larger-scale transit projects, and in some cases, the smaller items, like streetlights, for example, they're kind of a wild card at this point.
Yeah. No, that makes sense, and it's helpful to know that at least we're in the ballpark still, though I think we all recognize things could change rapidly these days. I would also highlight that on the master transportation plan feedback, our forum is still open today as the last day, so if you want to give feedback or ask people to give feedback, you still have time. And then I think, you know, my last question, well, question slash comment is on the Vision Zero work, because I know the Vision Zero Action Plan has so many measures and outcomes and things, and I think it would be great to start incorporating that into, you know, the budget. I know it's capital and doesn't include as many of the, like, outcome-output measures that some of our other budget chapters, are they chapters, include, but I think we're seeing really incredible impact from these smaller programs putting out. I mean, I think about where we're situated here, there's like three within a couple-minute walk of where we are that have just, as a pedestrian, really changed how I'm able to interact with our crosswalks and our intersections, and so, including, you know, some of those metrics to really show when we spend this money, here's what we get for it, because I think as much as there is that maintenance cost and constant upkeep, we also know that it's really effective. And I want, you know, this was an incredibly thorough presentation, and I have very few questions, which is great, but I also want us to be able to really brag about, you know, the things that we're doing, and I think it comes across in, you know, our NVTA meetings, we were talking about, they were talking about best practices and the floating bus stops that incorporate our bike infrastructure alongside our transit infrastructure, and the NVTA research leads were like, and actually, we could just walk down the street, because Arlington's already doing it. And so I think, you know, those are the things that I really would love to make sure that the public knows is how well we're implementing a lot of this, because it, you know, these are some really big numbers sometimes, and I think people want to know that when we're spending that money, we are getting the desired impact of actually keeping people safer on our streets.
I appreciate hearing that, and I think that that's really good food for thought that we can bring back to the team, and I do want to use this moment, if I may.
Yes.
I say "we" a lot when I'm talking about our programs. I get to sit here and talk about how great our teams are and the work that they do is, and the Vision Zero team deserves immense recognition for what they're doing. The Arlington's transportation team deserves immense recognition for the outreach that they're doing. So, thank you.
And Tyler?
I just, I think it's on.
No, Green is on here.
I just also wanted to mention there are some Vision Zero performance measures in the general fund portion of the budget. If you go to the TNO section, we can certainly expand upon that, but they're there.
Yeah. Thank you.
And our website has this vision, really great
The action plan page has everything.
It's got the toolbox, and it has great pictures and
And a lot of data on how we actually can see the crash numbers go down. Ms. Coffey is not ready, so Mr. DeFranco.
Mostly just, I don't know, have just a comment to thank each of you. NVTA and NVTC have kind of, in the last year and a half, I've gotten to earn a few gray hairs with that. But I also have probably given maybe one or two of you a gray hair or two with questions about Vision Zero pieces, and I'm grateful for your grace, you know, Dan and everybody, and I know that's not all capital, but there's, I can't tell you how many people, Little Falls and Old Dominion, those bollards have changed that entire intersection, and then there's, you know, the shift in speed hump thinking is, I'm grateful for. So we give you challenges when there's a urgent safety, and so it's important for us to say a big thank you for tolerating the urgency of, you know, Carlin Springs. We've made progress, but we made, the shift has been huge, and there are a number of other places, so just a big thank you to each of you.
I want to invite Mr. Muratovic by just so. Until he is here to present on behalf of the Transportation Commission, I
Yes. I want to read it.
I think specifically on Vision Zero, I think this was a very defining year behind us. We have seen how things have really worked in the field out there. You took some significant, I mean, this quick implementation projects make a huge difference. So I cannot speak high enough of that, but I will come back to that later. Mr. Muratovic, the floor is yours. Green is on, yes, now you're on.
There we go. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present on this pretty important matter. I'd like to thank the county board for, in my opinion, and I think in many other people's opinion, being overworked and underappreciated, and also for the incredible staff with whom we have on the Transportation Commission, a wonderful relationship, and we're really fortunate to have such staff in Arlington. The current proposal has many positive things, so it has good geographic distribution, every part of the county will benefit in some way. The Transportation Commission is very supportive of the South Carlin Springs and the South George Mason Projects. It'll improve north-south connectivity and safety around schools, ultimately giving citizens greater freedom and safety to move about the county. One thing that's also great is the hiring of the new FTE, so, which will create, result in savings of $86,000. There is a lot of research that demonstrates that building in-house capacity allows jurisdictions to lower their transportation infrastructure costs and deliver projects faster, and there are a lot of studies to that effect that I'd be happy to forward to the county board, so we're really excited about that. But since I want to be brief, I'm not going to focus on all the positives, I want to get to some of the things that could potentially be improved. And so for two years now, the Transportation Commission is unanimous in its opposition to the battery electric buses. They are more expensive, less reliable, and we have the example across the river of the DC Circulator. So what ended up happening with that, you had higher costs, reduced frequency, lower ridership, and ultimately, the route being canceled, part of it was taken over by Lamada. This is in a context of when the ART program already has pretty bad on-time performance, around 75%, which is not good. So to, and the goal is to increase that, but bringing in these buses that are proven to be not as reliable and more expensive might undermine that goal. Furthermore, it will undermine the wish of the majority of the respondents to the Arlington's transit future. What was it, the, all of the data that was collected, where 56% of the respondents said they want a system that is more frequent and more reliable, and battery electric buses would run counter to that. Furthermore, it does not move the needle environmentally either. We're talking about fewer than 1% of the county's emissions. There is an existing environmentally sustainable alternative, the renewable natural gas. The county has made major investments in producing that locally from our waste management facilities. It doesn't sound as nice as a battery electric bus, but it is a proven technology that we have already put a lot of money into. Thus, I don't want, I can't understate how much the commission feels this is ultimately a performative transit policy that doesn't move the needle on environmental issues, on reliability, on frequency, on anything. And if, furthermore, it might even have a negative externality of inducing more people to drive cars, because if you have lower reliability, people are going to switch to cars. So you might have this wish to institute a policy, but you're going to have a blowback and the countereffect. And the commission is even more against battery electric buses when you take a look into account the broader context. So tax revenue is down, 1.4 million, I believe, for transit purposes. Spending another $3 million on 1.4 million, I believe, for transit purposes. Spending another $3 million on eight buses, we don't believe is a solution. That cost will go up even to $9 million if, if we don't get the DRPT grant. So, what you have is the, the procurement of these buses overtaking the, the fund. And to the detriment of everything else. So, let me see. And then, the other broader context of, we're already so far behind on our, on our CIP. So, for example, we have the Columbia Pike project, and then no one wants to hear about anymore because it's like, because we've been talking about it for so long. But that project was supposed to be delivered in 2021, I believe. Now, it's 2027, the Performance Bus Network. Only eight out of the 23 stations have been built so far. So, we have this tougher budgetary environment. I didn't even talk about the federal level of what might be happening there, where we might have lower tax revenue because of the gutting of the federal government and because the new Transportation Secretary has said that, basically indicated that he's going to deprioritize urban areas. So, in that whole context, we think that it's not, if you're looking for something to get rid of and to allocate money to other projects that might be more impactful, the Transportation Commission believes that this is it. Let the other jurisdictions be the guinea pigs. Alexandria is testing out these buses. You know, like, we're, we're trying them out here, piloting to see how they're going to behave on our streets, on our topography, our weather. But for regular buses, you don't even need to do that because you already know they're going to work. So, that's, I don't want to, I don't want to make it sound too negative because there's a lot of great things in here. But we're really against the battery electric buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muratovic. And thank you for coming back to Columbia Pike. We cannot hear enough about that. If I have to be honest, this should have been done already way before 2021. But 2021, 2021 was for this phase of the project, right? For the current idea. And I think it was a little bit later. I think, I mean, we are still on time with the latest, right? And I hope we are, we're on time for 2025 to complete at least the eastern part of that, if you can elaborate on this.
Yes, we are on track for substantial completion of the phases that are under construction by the end of 2025. There may be some remaining light work to be done, just as there is on Segment F. Segment F looks done, but there's still remaining little items.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, that will be the case for CND.
But at least it won't, I mean, I, I think that the, the status of the project is, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, that the, the maximum impact that it has right now to residents and drivers and pedestrians as well, and the businesses that are there, is something that we will see significant improvement by the end of this, I mean, summer?
End of the calendar year.
End of the calendar year. Okay. I pray every day on the shrine of completion of this. Okay.
In good news on that point, though, when the partnerships were here, Langston was very excited to get the orange barrels coming there, and Columbia Pike's very excited to send them. So, I think we may, like we did with the buses, we may need some sort of parade or something to, to share the wealth. Sorry.
Yeah. People should be very careful about what they're wishing for. Mr. Spain, you had a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and you and I both live not too far. We're both, well, I'm a Penrosoian, so, you know, down there on the Pike. And we will be happy when that phase of the project on the Pike is, we hear about it about every other day. But look, I just want to circle back for a second, right? Since we are talking about transportation, we're talking a little bit about budget. One, I think there's a good news story here on Slide 23, which you talked about. But I think really, it gives me, you know, thought to, you know, 173% year-to-date increase in e-bikes. You talked about, I think...
Oh, sorry.
You want a Scooby snack?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think that is a good news story. But my question is, I guess, again, as we think down the road, and the entire study that's being done, right? It, it appears that more and more folks are going to be using e-bikes, right? And are we right-sized, right, to accommodate in due time? That's the first question. And secondly, if you can weave this all together, and maybe this conversation came up last year, I wasn't on the board, but I want to know, are persons with disabilities, mobility, sidewalks, when we have light pole, do we have an inventory across Arlington of sidewalks that have, still have light poles on them? Just, I mean, maybe you can get back with me on that? I'm wondering because, you know, Dominion, of course, has this, this big project about strategic underground initiatives. And I just want to get an overlay of like, what streets in Arlington are we tracking where persons with disabilities perhaps, from a transportation perspective, still can't utilize perhaps with a wheelchair, other forms? Do we have something like that?
So, I'll start with the second part of the question.
Go ahead.
Some of which we will likely need to get back with you on. But the slide that Ms. Huffman presented on the sidewalk condition includes a link to the actual interactive website that includes the data. What I don't know is if it includes that specific ask that you have in terms of the poles in the middle of sidewalks. So, that's where we'll need to, to draft a response.
Right. Only bring that up because as I walk and travel in parts of, I still see a lot of sidewalks that have light poles right in the middle of them.
Yep.
And I think we need to perhaps figure out a strategy, right, to mitigate, work with whoever, stakeholders, Dominion, to move those. It's going to vary costs. It's going to be a lot of money involved in that. But that is, we don't want people, you know, especially persons with disabilities or anyone going out into the street, right, as they maneuver. And I know you've heard it before. I just want to bring it back up to the forefront. And you were going to answer the second part?
About the Capital Bike Share, yes. So, during the CIP process last year, we increased the funding for Capital Bike Share to ensure that we would increase our expansion rate for e-bikes.
Okay.
So, that's baked into the CIP. And then, we will evaluate that again as we begin the next CIP process. We are undertaking what I'll call a light transit strategic plan-type process for the Capital Bike Share network, is looking at where we're expanding next, how we're expanding our infrastructure, so that we have a plan in place. We undertook this some years ago, and it's time for a refresh. And that's on our plate for this coming year.
That's great. Thank you very much. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I will go immediately to Mr. DiFeranti. I have a question that's kind of complimentary to that. One of the things that I have been able to, to follow is, there is an equity dimension to the expansion of Capital Bike Share. E-bikes are good vehicles. It's a good system for, you know, working people to, to go from and to, for example, from my neighborhood to work in Clarendon and back. And what I've seen over time is that, at the very beginning, there was a reluctance to adopt. And now, there is a massive adoption of, of e-biking. It's actually also a little bit less expensive than the bus, per se. So, if one uses that smartly. So, how do we account for that? Do we?
We do. And I'm glad the slide is still up. We have our Cabbie for All program, which works with DHS and other vendors within the county, such as AFAK, to provide memberships that the county offsets. I think it's a $5 membership for people that qualify to then be able to use Capital Bike Share, mostly for free unless you pass the certain thresholds of ridership time.
Yeah. I've, I've seen specifically the optic on, and the use of e-bikes for that.
Right.
And, and I can see the availability shifting from, you know, where people are at home to where people work and vice versa. So, for me, this is also a question about the availability of, of bike service stations and, and the distribution of e-bikes, a little bit off the corridors when, you know, when, when it's not peak time, when, you know, people come back to home, et cetera, and rebalancing that. Will the, the additional FTE or the, the, the transformation of the contractor position, the FTE, we'll be paying attention to that as well?
Yes, that will be part of their portfolio.
Okay. Mr. DiFeranti, and then Ms. Coffee.
First, to Mr. Muratovic.
Yes.
My last name's DiFeranti, so I'm just doing the best I can. So, hear you loud and clear on the battery. We have a policy, and then we have a, the purchases that we're doing to start. If there is a reliability problem, I, I will want to know about it. Just want to respect the strength of what you expressed. For clarification, it's, the purchases are all capital expenditures and not ongoing. Is that right, Ms. Crawford?
Yeah.
That, I had a similar, yes. The, the purchases are capital because of the differentiated maintenance needs of these types of infrastructure, because we'll have multiple types of infrastructure. It does make things a little bit more complicated that could have an operational impact.
We don't know, do we know in this year's budget, or do we know the operational impact?
I just wanted to clarify, it is capital, but TCF contributes, and TCF also pays for outerout expansion. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Got it. Okay. All right. Well, I, I think mostly I'm in a space where I'm, take your point and want to wrestle with it. And I'm not, reliability, I think, is important. But I, I think as a start, I'm very comfortable with our first start. As you know, there's 15-year cycles, and, and we have a lot, long way to go. So, if there's reliability concerns, I certainly know that we will hear about them and, from, from all of our team. I don't know, the other question is not on transportation capital, but it is on transportation. And so, maybe I should yield to Ms. Coffee or to others. We're not behind for the first time in a couple weeks. And so, and, and that's not every...
But don't get us there.
I'm not going to try and get us there. The question is, is on Route 43. We don't have ongoing. We're in trouble. We do not have ongoing. And so, and I have a, there's a county staff person who says, "I used to try and take the 43, and I don't anymore." And so, that anecdotal evidence I take as conclusive data that proves...
Proves what?
I'm being facetious, but nice-to-have is not a thing in this budget. And so, you know, the three Y, can't do it anymore. I'm sorry, we got two emails. I didn't object to Metro's decision to hold off on the three Y. And the 16, there are a couple other routes. We have cut in half the 43. And we, the question is, can you still, I don't know if it's Ms. Wang, or, or can we, are we still in a low-utilized bus that if we go for another additional savings on this, you still could take the blue and yellow line, and you'd have to read longer, and you'd have a 20-minute wait time as opposed to 10 or 30-minute wait time? Do you have any thoughts on this? Because we're deep in this process. I know there are colleagues who disagree. To be fair, this is not only my idea, but I won't pin it on anyone else because we're talking about cuts. But I wondered if you had any thoughts. Ms. Wang.
Yes. So, Route 43, ever since people heard about us reducing the frequency during the peak period, I have heard from many staff, I didn't realize how many county staff actually take that. They commute from, you know, the...
You're looking at a couple.
Yeah.
You're there.
Yeah. So, it's a, and it's one of my personal favorite, too, because it does allow you to take that one-seat ride and hopping between metro stations, and eventually, basically, you're transferred to your metro line. When we are talking, thinking about reduction, we not just look at the ridership. 43 is not the lowest ridership. It actually performed pretty well. Because we look at, you know, overall, what's the impact to people's lives. And there are some metro, there are some art lines that may not have a high ridership number, you know, for various reasons, but they have importance. So, sometimes, you know, people may have their livability depends on availability of this transit line. And we try not to take them away. And a couple of the lower performing routes, so, in the South Arlington area, we're trying to protect them. And because of that, 43 reduction is the one that we think it will cause some pain for people who really take them for commute. They may need to be there 10 minutes sooner. But because we're still maintaining the line, we kind of feel that's the least damage in terms of, during a challenging budget year.
So, that, that's helpful on 43. I think maybe I'll follow up online on 43. But 74 and 84 were mentioned as equity-related benefits. I advocated for, I don't know if this was causal, but I advocated for the line in front of my house with the 72 and the 53. And the 53, I wrote it. And I was like, this is a happy, fun ride if you want to have it. No one was on the bus at all. And so, the 72 seems, it's also close. And everybody in my neighborhood takes a 72 and doesn't need the 53. So, are you, were you alluding to the 74 and the 84 when you talked just earlier? Or there are others?
There are others, too. So, and again, because they run on Columbia Pike, and given the construction situation, you know, those factors could affect the actual ridership in the recent couple of years. So, we, we don't want to remove that travel option for people who really depends on that.
Great. I follow up. I'm not eager to cut things, but you can't say you want everything and not be willing to put stuff on the table. And so, that's why I asked. Thanks.
Ms. Coffee.
The 43 is still my, my favorite bus. So, it's, but it's okay.
Give me your favorite. I didn't know it should stay.
Well, I think it, it's one of the buses that does really achieve more of our north-south connectiveness rather than just east-west. And I think, I think part of the reason it has pretty substantial ridership is that it's providing something that few of our other bus routes really directly provide. And, but I understand all of the other mitigating factors. And on Capital Bike Share, you know, I would say we could increase our e-bikes by about 200%, and we would still not have enough. I, you know, I'm in Clarendon. I have three cabbie stations within a couple-minute walk. And sometimes, there's no e-bikes available at any of them, or they're reserved, because people plan further ahead than I do, and they reserve their bikes. But it's a good sign. It's a good sign. I was wondering on the accessibility topic. I know, in addition to our sidewalk inventory, we're also in the process of our ADA bus stop reconfigurations. We talked a lot about that at CIP last year. But I'm just, you know, it was on the list as one among many things, but I do think it's an important one. How, what, what percentage through our bus stop upgrades are we? And how far are we going to be able to get in this fiscal year, do you think?
The specific percentage, I have to check my book and come back with it.
Approximate is also okay.
Approximately, so, we are tackling the, what we call Tier One, the ones that has some of the minor things. And staff is planning on just get the Tier One out of the way in a year or two. So, that's our, and another way we're tackling that is for the sites that need additional design and construction, the way we're doing is, let's get the designs, let's get the survey, let's get all the sort of preparation moved forward. And then, maybe we can accumulate a, you know, a good number of locations and pack them maybe into one contract. And we're also, that would allow us to go after funding, external funding. Sort of instead of individual bus stop, may, that may have to, you know, rely on local funds, we, we can pack them so that, so there's a lot going on. And we actually are, we are going after some of the state funding for improvements. And hopefully, then, that give us another way of delivering bus stop improvements. In the past, we have done that through county teams and county staff with, you know, really well-coordinated effort with our operations division, Water Source Streets, concrete team. That, we have the design, and they happen to have time, and they can do. But when you are not sort of designated team for doing certain things, you have to wait until the other priorities get, you know, finished, which give it a lack of predictability for when certain things can be done. By approaching a different delivery method that allow us to, you know, do more design, have more project, pack that into a larger project, and maybe bid it out, the benefit is you, you have more control over the timeline. There is a negative. It always costs you something, right? So, the negative side is, it may cost a little bit more, because then you're, you're reaching out for external delivery method, like a contractor and all that. out for external delivery method, like a contractor and all that. But we think it's actually worth it in terms of allowing us to also reach out for funding.
Yeah. No, that's, that's great, I hadn't even thought about the ability to do that, so you all are always three steps ahead, and that's great. That's all from me, thank you.
Thank you. Actually, you stole my thunder, because I was about, to ask about, you know, shelters and basically benches, which is, you know, this staggering idea of making it a little bit easier for people to wait, actually, at the, at the bus. I mean, accessibility is absolutely critical, but, you know, basics first. And, and for me, it's still a, I mean, my, my experience in, it's completely individual and anecdotal, right? My experience is that the, you know, on, on where, where sidewalks are more aging or older, et cetera, we, the, the bus stop still is not completely figured out. I mean, shelters are less frequent, and benches are not there, or, you know, we had a kind of a pilot program where we put leaning. I haven't seen them as of recently, I understand that you're working on that, and, thank you. On, on Mr. Muratovic's comments, absolutely, even the discussion about 43 is basically a discussion about level of service, and the, the primordial transportation policy discussion, what we are focusing the dollars on, to get the best, the best service so that the system takes on ridership, or, you know, expand this person, provide more coverage. This coverage versus service is a, is a, is a huge problem, and, I mean, I agree with, with Ms. Coffee, 43 is an amazing bus, because it's actually an express bus, it's faster than, than its existing alternative. The question is, this is a luxury problem to have, I mean, you have two options, and you can choose where other, and other places you have, only one, and it's like semi-viable, right? So that's a, that's an ongoing discussion, that also cuts into the discussion about what kind of technology we lose, but this is, use, but this is for the, I have to ask of something about the lights, the streetlights, because you said that the first generation of LED lights, which we implemented about, now about a decade ago, right?
Sorry, it was between 2011 and 2016 is when we
Right.
Yes.
So these streetlights have not failed yet, so they are not failing, they are still on, right? Do we have any significant reason to replace them, or is it just because it's just the, the, the
Yes, you're right about the lifespan of, you know, a lot of them are still good. However, there is a critical component of the county streetlight, which is also a very beloved feature, is the dimming. It has a dimming system
Yes.
Attached to the light, that technology has already expired, no longer supported, the company is already gone.
So explain that to me, I thought that, that these were
It's basically a ra, a radio communication
Correct.
In that, connects back to a backstage software that we can go in there, set what time, to dim it at what degree, how many percent, and all that, and of course, there's some field, you know, sort of double-checking going on. That technology, when, originally, when we had all the lights out, it was, you know, one contractor, one software, and that technology has really, you know, need to be updated. So sometimes it's not about the light bulb, it's actually that node. If that node fails, the current lights does not fit with, I mean, sorry, the old lights does not fit with the new node that we have already procured, which is part of the second generation. So many times, if we found the node is beyond repair, we'll have to replace the entire light fixture along with the bulb. However, there is some benefit, because many of our previous Generation One bulbs, they are the higher color temperature
Yes, they're like
So, I would just say, residents who have seen the newer lights, the majority of them actually like them. Some may notice, oh, all of a sudden, the light is brighter because the bulb got cleaned. But the majority of them, you know, want to maintain the dimming feature, they also want to have the warmer lights, which is what we are introducing now with the second generation. So that is a piece of cost, so we are not prematurely going out there just swapping out lights, there's a technology reason.
Okay, I will follow up on, on this, because I, I thought that this was one of the biggest advantages, that we wouldn't have to care about replacing bulbs so often, le, less, and then we had the dimming feature that I understood was kind of automatic, if, if, if also remote control, now you say that the remote control doesn't work anymore.
No, it still works, except for the nodes that sort of failed and went beyond the repair. So we can't get new nodes of those old technology anymore, and they are not, Arlington's lights are not just photosensitive, they are actually dimmed per a program, what we call progressive dimming program.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? We could sit here about three hours and continue this conversation, but Thank you. Thank you very much for presenting. I want to talk about money. And debt. So, Mr. Manager?
Yes, we're going to, as always, wrap up our deep intellectual conversations with Jason Fries.
Is that his podcast, or?
No, podcast. Okay, so, good afternoon, again, Jason Fries, Department of Management and Finance. So I'll be talking really quickly both about debt service, and then we'll move on to the Metro budget. So we'll just go ahead and jump right in if we go to the next slide, to talk about our debt service in fiscal 2026. So what we have here, this, our debt service budget, this includes both existing debt service for all of our bonds we've issued previously, as well as debt service for the upcoming calendar year 2025 bond sale, and in total, it's increasing just over $3.5 million, which is about 4.2% to $88.2 million. Total debt service, which this includes things that are funded in other departmental costs, which is our short-term finance program, which you all heard about earlier, as well as debt for AHIF, which is paid for out of the Affordable Housing Investment Fund. In total, then we're increasing $6.6 million, or about 6.6%. So to give you a little background on short-term finance, I think you've heard kind of what it funds, what type of projects earlier, but this is, again, where we fund projects that are not really eligible for bonds, they're useful life, it's about three to 10 years, and we use a mix of both short-term revenue bonds and/or a line of credit to finance these costs. They're paid out of a non-departmental, we have a, a budget just for a short-term finance program, and then on AHIF, that funds primarily a 2021 line of credit that we secured, which was initially $150 million for the county's commitment to the Barcroft Affordable Housing Project, which now has come down through two actions of the board, $30 million additional dollars, and now it's at $120 million, and I know there's a proposal for an additional $5 million to pay that down, which has benefited us, because right now, the current interest rates on the line of credit, while they are coming down on the short end, are just below 5%, whereas a couple of years ago, they were below 1%. So they're still elevated, but they are normalizing a little bit over the past six or eight months. So moving back to the general fund-supported debt service, we are currently underway with planning for this year's bond sale, and we're working through the various projects that we are scheduled to fund as part of that, as part of that sale. So we expect to come back later this year, once we finish that analysis with the request, or any updates to the planned issuance, once we do finalize all of those needs. And then as a background, I, 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 where, I just wanted to give you a, a look at where debt service stands now versus when we had the CIP just about a little over a year ago. Compared to the 25 through 34 adopted CIP, we're actually about $1.8 million lower on debt service than estimated, so we continue to trend just a little bit below where we thought we'd be, which helps in the debt ratios, which I'm going to talk about on the next slide. So we flip to the next slide. This, I think you all know, for, for the new members of the board, this is the, what we call the 10% rule, and this is of, we have a couple of different policies on debt service, this is the one people focus on the most. And what this is, is that the county's outstanding general fund debt service, this includes both the county's and the schools' debt service, should not exceed 10% of the general governmental expenditures. So as you see on the chart, we continue to remain at somewhat elevated levels, you know, the mid-nines, mid to upper 9%, but at the same time, we're comfortably below the 10% cap that we set for ourselves, with a peak out in 2032 of 9.7%. Some other policies we have, which are outstanding per capita debt as a percentage of per capita income, outstanding debt to the assessed value of property within the county, as well as the overall long-term growth in debt, all those policies also continue to remain within their policy limits. So if we go to the next slide, just to close on, on debt service and where we are, as mentioned earlier, we're working through this year's bond sale, and there may be opportunities there to lower issuance needs for some of the projects. We're, we're also looking at some of the existing funds that we have from other previously issued bonds, to see if there's any opportunity at all there to maybe reallocate some of those funds to any project that may not need all of their balances this fiscal year. There are limitations, our referendum language does provide limited flexibility, so as we work through each project's needs, we will be considering those types of things when we come back to the board later this year with any potential bond sale. And then again, on Barcroft, I noted earlier that short-term rates continue to fall from their peak, just under 5%, and that with the recommendation of the additional $5 million being paid down, that generates just about $250,000 of savings of interest only. On top of that, once we do start paying off the principal, it would also have that benefit as well. So I'll stop there, if you want to maybe take questions on the debt service first before we move to Metro.
Yes, that's, that's
I have a, I have two questions on debt service, if I can
Okay.
Jump in.
I don't know if you're
I think it's on.
Okay, I cannot
It's green, not red, we've come around to green. It's two things, so one on what you just said around the Barcroft debt, so paying down the principal faster, especially with a slightly higher interest rate than some of our others, generally sounds like a good deal. What's the difference in interest rate that we earn on, say, unspent AHIF dollars versus the current interest rate on the line of credit?
It's, I'd say roughly about 1%.
1% difference?
Right. If we're talking about, about, if we're talking about 5%, about a 5% cost of, of, of interest to pay
Yeah.
On the line of credit, I, I think we're generating in the low to mid fours, it may be lower, actually, maybe more like half a percent, but it's, it's lower than the five, I want to say it's somewhere between four and four and a half right now, but that changes, and as the short term, as the Fed continues their policy of, of lowering the Fed funds rate, that's going to lower that, what we're earning on our funds as well in our, in our portfolio.
Right, but those two, in theory, move together, but not right now, because everything's a little wonky. Okay. And then second question is, to share the Debbie Downer role with, with some of my colleagues, if we have a, a year where, say, average household income drops precipitously, or the expenditures of the county drop precipitously, how does that fit into the bond policies and those metrics of which that, that
So if the per capita income does fall, and using those metrics from the, from Bureau Labor Statistics, if they do fall in the county, and then our outstanding per capita debt exceeds our policies, then we would have to, i, if, if it's with outstanding debt, and it happens quickly, and with things that we cannot change, which would be debt we've already issued, I think we'd have to have, come back to the board and have a discussion on what do we do? Do we think this is a sustained, long-term trend that we need to readjust our capital plan, or is this a blip, is it a short-term, you know, there will be some normalization? I think it's something that we would have to look at our policies and determine, is it acceptable or not, because we set the policy for a reason that we believe that's the limit we should be at. So I think, I think that would facilitate a discussion with you all on what direction we head if we ever did exceed one of those policies.
And you know, has it ever happened in the history of the county, wartime or anything? Okay.
I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
I mean, I, I would just like to say, in that kind of situation, I don't want to be grim, but we would be, we would, it's like you're in a boat and you're getting swamped, and everybody else is getting swamped too, so, you know, we'd be coming back to you, but it would be affecting all our neighbors.
It wouldn't be a surprise
Yeah.
At that point, yeah.
I mean, the assumption is that it's not going to be a catastrophic financial event that is, you know, centered only on Arlington, but, I mean, in the more, more broader regional, and that, that means that, that evaluations would have to be seen in the context of that.
I think it's just when we come to the CIP midpoint update, that'll be a set of questions, and particularly if I remember a couple of our out-years of CIP, we get real close to the 10% with schools in the mix, and so I think making sure we have a little room in this time is interestingly important.
And good weather by fiscal year 32, Ms. Coffee?
Yeah. Continuing on our, our debt policy compliance questions, I assume that, you know, the 10% rule projections include some assumptions with respect to general fund expenditures and revenues going forward. Have we tested how wrong we would need to be on general fund expenditures to, you know, even if nothing changes on our debt, debt and capital side? If our budget were to decrease by X percent, like, do we know what that X percent is before we get in trouble with the 10%?
We can, we can calculate that, we, what we do is, every year, we're already truing it up to what our budget is, what our proposed budget is, and we keep going every 12 months and rolling it forward and rebase lining where we are. And with that, we're also looking at where is the growth of the county budget, and then, you know, every two years, we have a CIP. We look at, are the growth factors that we've been using, are they in line, consistent with what we had in the past? So there's a constant truing up that we're all already doing. Is there, is there a form of looking at, like, you know, a sensitivity of where we're to be right now? There's a lot of variables, you know, it's, it's a 10-year plan.
Yeah.
So we like to true up each year to, to see where we are, and then to rebase line as we go forward.
Yeah, and that makes sense, that we, we're pretty comfortable on room within the next two years, and so if we get this, the macroeconomic signs that something has gone really wrong, we adjust the CIP, we don't just crash through our
Right, so if you look now, you know, with us, let's say fiscal 20, 20, 20, what is it, 28, 29, where we get close to 9%, that gives us time, the next few bonds that we have, if something comes, unless it is unpredictable and immediate, that we have time to react before that happens, to scale down our program or address it as needed.
Great, thank you, that's all from me.
Thank you, Mr. Westerde Franty, and Mr. Spain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following up a little bit on Ms. Coffee's question, is a meals tax increase of 1% in Slide 3 yet or not? Or do you want to get back to me on that?
You mean, in, in terms of the county's overall
Yeah, yeah.
If it's, if it's included in the, in the revenue side of
I'd have to get back to you.
Okay.
That was included in the total expenses that I've used there?
Yeah, the glory of when we were trying to build schools six years ago, every one of those bars went well above, on the school side, went well above the 10%, and so I just, that would have a slight impact there. And then I guess, the only other question I have is on Barcroft. Do you know, maybe this manager, Ms. Cowan, I don't know, does the 250, we've been prepaying, and we've been, to Ms. Cunningham's question, we've been saving money by prepaying, but, you know, there's a reason that there are 5% interest rate mortgages, and not 20% down mortgages, and so is the 250,000 in interest that we're saving, is that in our ongoing?
Well, that, that, Jason could correct me if I'm wrong, it's going to show up in our AHIF balances, as it's, in other words, we avoid having to put that towards interest payments, it's available for AHIF investment.
Got it, okay, all right, well, I mean, there's sometime, one of the fiscal crises, there was, I mean, the bond markets can tell us how we have to do our macroeconomic policy, and I respect that completely, I also, if we need economic stabilization, there's liquidity in addition, that is, for, for us, in addition to, that in addition to the criticalness of being cost-efficient, there's liquidity issues, and just for myself, I'm not even consider, we, you know, I'm not even considering anything more than either zero real estate tax increase or a quarter of a penny, but if it gets down to an eighth of a penny, you can imagine, I'm not interested in an eighth of a penny if we can, we can still say that things like Barcroft and our balance, reserve balances overall are fairly conservative, and so I don't know, that's a lot of honest talk, I don't think that many people are listening, but I just thought I'd say out loud, the, you know, that question, like, if we could save, if we have an economic stabilization requirement of 11.5 million in addition, but we have the Barcroft decision, I think it could, you could argue it's decent fiscal stewardship not to do any real estate tax increase, and instead fiscal stewardship not to do any real estate tax increase, and instead address the one time. And I'm sure that I have, I don't think this is Mr. Fries' question, I think it's a manager question.
Well, no, I mean, that's, I mean, that $5 million for, you could choose not to pay down the debt.
Yeah.
And apply it to something else, I mean, we, this is, that's a policy decision for you all to make. I think, obviously, you know what I think, because I, that's what I propose, but there's nothing, there's no magic to that, and then the kind of, that would actually be one of the places that I would look if we really got into an extreme situation.
But there is, there is a magic of opportunity cost.
Right.
I mean, $250,000 today are, have a value, I mean, they can buy, I don't know, a third of an apartment, a CAF apartment, tomorrow, they may, they may be less worth that, et cetera. So it's basically the risk assessment that we make, the financial, the ability to financially respond.
Yeah, and I'm going to apologize, because now Jason's going to have to talk more, but, you know, Jason spends a lot of time looking at short-term interest rates, the line of credit we have, and then long-term rates, and the market's been doing some sort of weird things with 10-year rates, and I will only say is that, and we heard this, I think Mr. Spain and I heard it when we were at the Economic Development Commission, the only thing the markets hate is uncertainty. They actually are perfectly fine when things are horrible or great, but it's this uncertainty, and so when the president comes out and announces new tariffs and those kinds of things, it tends to, you know, Jason's been on full alert, like fueled on the runway, ready to go to refinance our debt, and we have to ask him to stand down, because things are just too volatile.
Yeah, even, you know, last summer, we looked at potentially refinancing our debt, there were times when rates fell substantially, but we knew, because already earlier, that the rates fell, and it takes about three months, three to four months for us to react quickly, to refinance and come to the board, seek authorization, structure a deal, go to the markets, and we knew in those three months, it's probably going to disappear, and so we waited, and by the time we theoretically would have gotten to that, it was already back up 1%. And at that point, 5- to 10-year rates were back above the one-month to 12-month rates. So we watch it constantly, because what we like to do is maybe secure at least some type of, to hedge some of our variable rate debt with some fix, if we can, if it's advantageous. So we've been watching, but as rates are now starting to come down, that's great, but there's a lot of noise that's happening right now, sometimes the rates are shooting back up, sometimes they're back down. And so, that both creates a lot of uncertainty, what we're going to do, but also, it can also hinder access to markets. If, you know, the spreads on some of our debt will get very wide, or people expect a much higher interest rate, because they don't know where the rates will be tomorrow. So we have to watch that, and so that's why we're cautiously looking at this year's bond sale and what we can do there, as we're making that evaluation.
Yeah, sounds like you're in the right job. I want to sound responsible and be responsible, but I also want to preserve that tiny bit of policy discretion while being responsible, because, I mean, as evidenced by the 43, I'm really willing to do hard things, but I don't want to just eat vegetables only in life, so.
Well, we are in an inflationary environment, and we still have a pre-recessionary situation, which is not a good place to be. So, that's high interest rate, I mean, higher than you would expect in a weakening economy, and that's not good for borrowing, which makes the recessionary economy even worse. Okay, other questions on this? Okay, so then, let's talk about Metro.
Sure. So, if we go to the next slide, so we'll talk here about our contributions to Metro as a regional funding partner. So in fiscal 2026, the county's total subsidy for the system is rising on a gross basis by $19.5 million, which is about 16% to a total of $144.6 million. Womata's budget does include a 3% cap on overall subsidy increases, however, it also included funding this year to replace some lost time, loss of one-time federal funds in fiscal 2026, show, and that's the reason for why it's a much higher than 3% increase to the county, shown at the gross level there. So on the positive side, with Womata's budget, there is ridership improvements that have continued to be seen, however, revenues from that increased ridership continue to lag pre-pandemic levels. And to give you context, currently, less than 20% of Womata's operating costs are funded from ridership revenues, which is a number that has continued to decline since I've been working here at the county.
There's no link.
It's not me, I promise. So, yeah, as you're aware, the budget includes a substantial subsidy increase implemented back in fiscal '25, which, at that point, there was an additional $463 million of regional funding that was agreed to. This was the fund Womata's budget gap that was created from much of those federal funds that were running out from the pandemic era. So as part of the agreement last year, the Commonwealth agreed to provide 50% of Virginia's share of that increase, but only for two fiscal years. So we're in that second fiscal year for fiscal 2026, and there's no agreement in fiscal '27 to provide, yet to provide any match to this ongoing increase. So what you see here on the chart is how we fund the subsidy of the $145 million. Just about $90 million of that is from our state transit balances and gas tax revenues. This exceeds what we actually receive each year from the state transit revenues, and you can see, we are receiving about $40 million of ongoing revenues, and then we are using about $30 million of balances that we've had at NVTC from our state transit balances, and $20 million, which is our share of that state match to the increase over the two years, to meet our needs. And after utilizing all those balances, and some small funding from the Transportation Capital Fund for some small bus route increases that occurred previously, the general fund portion of funding is increasing by 3% to $51.2 million. But looking ahead, as you can see, it does not get any prettier at all as you look down to the next fiscal years, and over the next three years especially. So, these are preliminary estimates, so do not expect these to hold any weight going forward, but they are, you know, order of magnitude what we believe we may be seeing. But you see that there's going to be a rather large gap next year, once we fully use all of our transit balances that we've held to help us get through the last few years, and once the state stops their contribution, and once all federal dollars at Womata are gone, coupled with their continued increases, we are going to have substantial increases at the county. So you see that there could be another $24 million increase in fiscal '27, and another $30 million increase in fiscal '28, which would be $54 million cumulatively going forward, so. It's an effective more than doubling of our subsidy, from what we can afford from our general fund, is where, right now, it could potentially be, in the current state of, you know, the environment with how we fund Metro. So, this is just highlighting the urgency that is needed to identify a new regional funding source, as, you know, these funding challenges, they're greater than the ability of local county, or counties, cities, towns to afford, to be able to absorb this magnitude of an increase. So I know, you know, there are several regional groups meeting, discussing, working on this problem, and they've been doing that for the past year, so it's hopeful that a decision will be reached regionally this year, as to address, you know, the best approach to resolve this funding gap going forward. So if we go to the next slide, kind of closing on Metro, and I'm always, I always have negative news, I feel bad about that, but one day we'll have positive news, I promise. But, to close on Metro, we are continuing to see these significant increases to our subsidy, with no relief currently in sight. We have that Commonwealth match, which is expiring at the end of fiscal '26. So again, it's important that we work on identifying both an ongoing contribution from the Commonwealth, as well as hopefully some sort of new revenue source that could help address this substantial increase in Metro's, a safe, you know, secure, reliable funding source. Even with that, you know, I would expect that the general fund will face some pressures going forward to meet a portion of that increase, so that's where we are today, and we'll continue to monitor this as we go forward, but there's much more work to be done here.
Thank you. Our colleagues' questions to Metro?
So we had our DMV moves meeting on Monday, and I think, I think being sort of the big picture for public, and then there's a specific question that probably Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Count already know what I'm going to ask, but the, because the DC bill has not passed through the House of Representatives, there's so much uncertainty clouding over that meeting, and there is a May 16 meeting that is coming up. The ridership, I don't know, I mean, you know way more about the finances, Jason, Mr. Fries, than I do, but I do think the ridership is also a moving target, and so they're, they're trying not to be overly optimistic, but the things are changing because of the back-to-work. So, and I think it's important to just say out loud what they said there, which is, previously, the goal for permanent funding source was 700 million, and a bunch of us, not me first saying it, said, "Stop talking Roslin Metro Tunnel right now, fix the short term." And what they said on Monday was, "Now we're looking at 450 to 600," which is a lot less over time, maybe it's billion, I don't know, but, but they cut by 20% the amount of ass, some fiscal restraint and responsibility due to technology. So, that is a good sign. The dedicated funding stream is a very complicated thing, because Maryland's system and DC's systems are so different for funding. Maryland funds it all at the state level, they don't have any local skin in the game. So, that's all happening. I think, mentioned there also was a one, a, what I think is a one-time, some adjustment to the funding for this year. The ridership has gone up, they've made some additional cuts, and I'm not sure, do we have any sense of when we might know, because there's a slight, tiny rebate to Virginia, Maryland, and DC, and I think it's going to result in some one-time money for us? And I just don't know if any of you know, if we might know that next week, so that we could...
We do.
Okay.
So, at Womata's meeting today, actually, I think it happened at the same time as our meeting here started, that they, I should know that, actually, the meeting was this morning, different Womata meeting, but either way, they laid out jurisdiction by jurisdiction what the impact is. So for fiscal '26, there were 19, just over $19 million of savings that were identified in the '26 budget alone. This was from a couple of cost efficiencies, bus route improvements, implementing the better bus network, there's a whole list, I can send if you all want, today's Metro presentation, which has all of that detail. But the net effect is about $19 million on subsidies. For Arlington, it's just under $1 million of our operating. However, if you look at, when I showed you on the previous slide, how much we are currently using of our NVTC balances to get by this year, you know, 1 million of 145 million is 0.6% of our budget. It's great, it's great it's going down, not up, so we're very happy about that, but from my perspective, it's...
So that's clearly not ongoing, we still have major challenges on the Metro front.
It's a mix, it was a mix of ongoing and one-time savings, and that $19 million wasn't all ongoing, but it is money that's at least reducing our subsidy in the near term by a small amount.
And does that have any, this, for Mr. Schwartz, for you maybe, but Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Count, do you know, do we know yet if that has any score impact on our one-time or ongoing? I would think just one time, but...
As Jason said, it's a mix, and so, and I think what he's being polite about is that, whatever we save, it's like, just, we fall into a hole in '27, it's incredibly deep, and he wants to leave some of that there to cushion himself.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's just going to be him falling into the hole.
Yeah. No, I take it as personally, I mean, DMV moves has to work, and elections matter, because if we don't win this fall's election, there will not be a governor who will step up to do this. And so, that is a personal challenge that's outside this room, but I just didn't know if there was even any one-time that fell out, and I can follow up on that. I don't want us to be, you don't count on ongoing, that's bad governance, but...
Well, the answer is yes, there is a mix that falls out, but I think that, and it's a policy conversation for you all to have, but I would just say, I'm very afraid of what's going to happen in '27. So that's, but you have to balance that as a board, and figure out whether you want to take some of that money now, or you want to put it aside for '27 and '28.
Yeah.
I guess, this is minuscule, it's a minuscule amount, I mean, it's 0.6% of the total, of course.
Now, there was, I think at the DMV moves, there was, on the capital side, there was a substantial decrease in their, what they're calling, you know, state of good repair and those needs, so, you know, we're only talking here at the operating side, there is a capital contribution part, which falls into our CIP, which impacts our debt service, because we issue debt to cover our portion of the metrics.
And one thing I did want to mention, because I talked to Regina about this, and because she's, this is, the federal government has a, it's called a PRIA contribution, which goes towards capital in the region, and with the continuing resolution, that money is still there. I think that you have to be wildly optimistic, or perhaps not thinking, to assume that when the new administration puts its own budget together, that that PRIA funding is, may be there, even if we have a change in administrations in Virginia, so it's just another complicating factor on the capital side. But I, you know, I'm trying not to be pessimistic about everything, but it's hard.
PRIA funding for the, those who are still with us, it's funding for maintenance, it's capital, it's capital money that pays for maintenance, has been attempted to be killed at least six times, and, but now, we have a continuing resolution that still continues the last time that survived.
Yeah.
And DC is not guaranteed that we'll be able, I mean, it's, there are $50 million that are missing there. Okay, other questions, colleagues? Which means that we can, for once, conclude the sessions five minutes before...
I want you to know, I never finish on time.
And with that, we are adjourned, I will use this, ouch.